All right, good evening, everybody. The June 24, 2024 regular meeting of the Malibu City Council is now called to order. In-person participants, if you'd like to speak, please submit your request to speak to the clerk on my right. Remote participants, if you'd like to speak, please join the Zoom webinar meeting printed on the agenda and raise your hand in Zoom when the item you wish to speak on is called. Kelsey, may we please have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Grisanti.
Here.
Councilmember Riggins.
Here.
Councilmember Silverstein.
Present.
Mayor Protem Stewart.
Here.
Mayor Yurin.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Okay. Lori, can you lead us in the pledge of allegiance before we leave?
And to your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lori, thank you very much. Kelsey, can I get a report on the posting of the agenda, please?
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on June 17, 2024.
May I get an approval of the agenda? A motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
I had a request from Lonnie Gordon to postpone item 4C, I believe it is, the telecom item. And I believe she's got the right to do that. They can delay one.
Actually, we can't. We're out of time.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Go ahead.
I spoke with Scott McCullough earlier this afternoon. We're not seeking the entire continuance of the item, but rather that the LCP be ruled upon and that the municipal code changes on the design standards resolution be continued to be heard at a further date. So I don't think the request was to continue the entire item, and I would suggest hearing it tonight so that we don't run out of time for consideration of the LCP amendment.
Good, okay, so let's solve their problem. So I've got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Eyes have it? Okay. We're going, we have no ceremonial presentations. We're going to move to oral and written communication from the public. If you'd like to speak, we're going to speak on items that are not on the agenda, and you need to submit a speaker slip to the clerk on my right. So make sure you've done that so we can get you in here. We've got a bunch of speaker slips. Okay, I'm going to try and read these. David Orzak. Come on up, if you're going to speak. Sure. You've got to speak as a podium, sir.
Excuse me. Oh, God, I can barely read this damn thing. I have just some recommendations. I'm a 45-year construction expert. I worked in the studio and I'm also a volunteer here and since I was 18. But I inspected the Adamson House. I'm an OSHA expert, a safety expert, and it needs some work. So the mayor had directed me earlier to talk to a few of the people there, so I'll do that. So I'll leave that one. But there's a crack in the wall, in the main wall, where they have parties every weekend, which I'm sure funds the city. And then one of the buildings at, like, behind the pool is falling apart into a historical monument, and I belong to the Historical Society in Chatsworth, and I'm adamant about keeping all the historic stuff restored, and there are grants for that. So I didn't write it down, but the request I had to the city was that they might write one, you know, to get that finished. When I was a little kid, I used to swim in the pool and live in the house. So the bank in Point Doom is really bothering me. It's sitting in the middle of a shopping center, and it's basically horrendous. I mean, outside, it's poor workmanship, and it's been sitting like that for a long time. So I would just ask the city to maybe get on the construction company if they're going to be, like, you know, working insider or whatever, to at least tape the windows off. There's trash everywhere inside. Outside looks terrible with the wood over it, and it had some brochures and stuff on it, which looks better. It looked better than, it's painted now, holes in the building everywhere, I really can't stand it. But I'm an aesthetics expert, and, let me see, I'm also a good organizer. The sand at the entrance to Malibu Beach has, you know, I know you guys have trucked in sand quite a few times when we asked for it, but it needs it again right away because the entrance, it's all been pushed away, and there's sandbags, they're rock hard. So if somebody steps off that, they could hurt their foot or whatever. And there's a huge amount of lagging. I'm not sure who's in charge, but maybe whoever, but the bathrooms need to be opened. It's summer, and, you know, they're all peeing and pooping or whatever right around the corner. So I know that system wasn't working good. So I don't know how it's doing it now, but if you guys could get on them, I'm sure all the public would be really.
Okay, David, your time is up, but thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Keith Cantor, please. Next, followed by Craig Gold. Craig, if you could, are you here? Come up, grab a seat up front if you would, please. Go right ahead, sir.
Hi, my name is Keith Cantor. I live at 6362 Sea Star Drive in Malibu. We've been building our house for the last six years, and we're not able to get our COO. There's litigation going on by a vindictive neighbor over 578 square feet, second-story ADU, and we're asking for a partial or conditional COO because the main level is done, and we've had all the sign-offs except for, I think, the sprinkler system has to be tested and filled with water, and that's it. We just recently passed our fuel mod, and we want to be able to live in the main level while the lawsuit with the second-story ADU is going on, and we've been rejected, and I need help. Trevor has rejected us, so.
Okay, we can't, we can't comment while you're speaking. When we're done, you may give some comments from the council.
Okay. Well, we need help trying to get our COO, excuse me, either a partial or conditional. We don't know how long the lawsuits are going to go on. It could go on forever.
I read your email that you sent to the city.
Yes, yes.
I'm aware of your situation.
I'm here pleading my case.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Craig, you're up. Liz Robinson, you're next. Are you here?
I am.
All right, come on up and grab a seat up front so you're ready to go, please. All right, sir, Mr. Gold, you're on.
I should have some extra minutes in a presentation. Thank you. Must be Parker. Thank you.
Six minutes, I believe.
Excellent, thank you. My name is, thank you for hearing me, Honorable Mayor and City Council members. My name is Craig Gold. I'm a Malibu resident. I live in Sycamore Park at Villa Escondido at the top of the hill. Now, this may come as a surprise to some of you, but I'm a little bit nervous right now. I'm not normally nervous about speaking in public, but today I'm going to talk out against a government agency that is known to be and is vindictive. I know this because it turned around and sued me for millions of dollars. Moreover, I know this because I've asked other people to come and speak here, and they refused to, or politely declined. In last week's council meeting during public comment, an MRCA representative announced that it was going to unilaterally direct all traffic from the official Villa Escondido Falls to use the trail at Villa Escondido. In other words, the MRCA is inviting thousands of people to use PCH in a way that has not been contemplated before, whether that be parking, or U-turns, or what have you. This is the same PCH that all of you and many, many others have been working to make safe again. It sounds like if this is allowed to continue to happen, no matter what you do, it's just going to change. During that meeting, y'all asked some really good questions, public safety, parking, trash, those kinds of things. And, Mr. Mayor, I have an answer to one of your questions, your question whether or not the neighbors were notified. And I can tell you unequivocally, no, we were not notified of any of this. Also, you indicated that you understand that there's no final judgment in our court case. Thank you for Councilman Stewart, because that's true. We've hit a bit of a roadblock in our court case, but we have appealed. There is no final judgment. So why am I here? In the city of Malibu, it takes two things to make a trail. It takes, first of all, permission to pass over the property, and secondly, you have to follow the rules in the city of Malibu. I can't wait to get back into court, but in the meantime, I'm here to talk about what the city can do for us. I'm here to talk about three promises that the city and its residents have made to each other. The first one you're all aware of, the mission statement. I'm not going to read the mission statement to you. I'm just going to paraphrase from the last paragraph. It talks about visitors serving recreational opportunities at proper times, places, and manners, and it says that they shall remain subordinate to the proximity of the access of residential uses and the need to protect the privacy of homeowners. That's the first promise. The second promise is another promise that the city has made to the residents and the residents have made to the city, and that's to follow the rules. The entire Sycamore Park is rural residential. The properties I'm discussing tonight are all rural residential. Even the property that the MRCA owns is rural residential. And I think it's important to note that it doesn't matter whether the property is private or public property in terms of a street. In the case of Sycamore Park, we're all private, but all of that property is still zoned rural residential. And this zone has rules that reflect the mission statement. These rules mean that whether I live on a private street or a public street, I cannot use my property as an amusement park. I can't use it as a dance hall or a restaurant. I also can't use my property to declare a public trail or public park without the city's permission. But that's exactly what the MRCA is doing with the properties in Sycamore Park, again, zoned rural residential, in violation of the city's zoning regulations in the LCP. Moreover, the MRCA is now in the process of creating a narrative to defeat the city's zoning, a narrative that Villa Escondido is an official designated public hiking trail in the city of Malibu. Let's look at the evidence. Next slide, please. There's a clicker. Even better, just the forward arrow. Yeah. So this is the recently installed turnstile at 6100 Villa Escondido. This is about as hokey as it gets, and at the end of the day, this is what they have put there. I think it's a bit of a development, and I don't know that they have a CDP for that. They've also installed signs throughout the neighborhood, and if you look at these signs, the far right one is Villa Escondido. It's the same color as all their trails. This is a map of Escondido Park that I pulled off of the MRCA's website. I want to show you a couple of things about it. First of all, that which is green is an existing trail. So as you can see, the vast number of streets here in Malibu are green, or of streets on this map are green. Moreover, if you drill down and actually look at Villa Escondido Drive, they actually call it out as a trail. Councilmember Silverstein, this is the spitting in your face that they're talking about. It's the only street that actually has the word "trail" on it, and there's a reason for that. And finally, they've started an incredible marketing campaign using the Barbies, that I assume these same Barbies that they trolled you with some months ago. That brings me to the third promise, Resolution 1619. In 2016, many of the people behind me were here to take Villa Escondido off of what was called a wish list trail. Villa Escondido was never a trail, and it certainly isn't an official trail from the city of Malibu. So here's my ask, that we keep our promises to each other. Please direct the city attorney to issue a cease and desist letter, followed up with legal action if necessary to prohibit the advertisement of Villa Escondido as an official designated hiking trail. I'm also asking this council to direct the city manager, the city attorney, the planning director, and the code enforcement officer to put their heads together and actually take action to enforce these promises that it's made with residents, enforce our zoning, enforce the LCP, enforce a requirement for development permits. I don't know how this is accomplished, but I know there's some smart people here that can do that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gold. Liz, you're up, followed by Cheryl Calvert. Cheryl, you here? Grab a seat, please. Go ahead.
Good evening. Thank you guys so much for hearing from us. I also am a resident of Sycamore Park, and I'm actually here because yesterday we had sort of an interesting afternoon. As you guys know, since we live in fire country, whenever there's a fire truck that comes down your street, you go, ooh, what's that about? And at the end of our street, in front of actually that turnstile, there was a paramedic, an ambulance, and a fire truck. And so several of us went out to make sure that there wasn't something going on that we needed to know about, and it turned out that Mr. Edmiston was in a car at the end of the street and had evidently called in some sort of an emergency, but he refused service even though there was a fire truck, an ambulance, and a paramedic that was there. He ended up driving away. They left after a certain period of time. He drove away, and after he left, his, I believe she's the attorney, Elena, showed up and sat on the street for a period of time, and I'm not sure why. But, and I'm not, I don't know that it showed up in those pictures that Craig showed you, but they have installed a sign that there's a trail camera there, and I am hoping that perhaps you all could access that footage to understand what happened so that we could all feel a little better about why emergency services were called in. That's pretty much the end of what I had to say, so thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Cheryl, you're up, followed by Howard. You're up next. Come on up front, Howard, please.
Hi, my name is Cheryl Calvert, and I live at the end of Villa Escondido Drive. During the school year, I work at a local elementary school, and this year I chose to focus on respect and communication with lots of rewards. I have to say Mrs. Stella's fourth grade class truly embraced this challenge, and I couldn't be more proud. They greeted each other and staff, from drop-off to pickup, with great eye contact, kind and respectful greetings, honesty, and truly a caring attitude. It really made a difference throughout the campus. I'd like to ask the city's help with our situation with the MRCA and their employees. I feel like we need a campus monitor at the end of the street. I don't see any kindness or respect for those of us who live here. Actually, it's truly the opposite, what we see and experience, and while I can handle 150 children, this is too much. At the situation at the end of our street yesterday truly shocked me. I was shocked at the waste of our county resources on a busy weekend. While I am thankful for Station 71's and their quick response, I was worried about what could have been happening outside our community and on the highway. My mother-in-law is 99, and I did call the paramedics this week, actually, but I had to go through LA City. LA City is not the same as LA County. Our services are superb here. So while I know my mother-in-law is a touch tone away from 911, I'd like you to ask all of you to assist us and make good decisions to help all our citizens in these situations dealing with the MRCA. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Howard, you're up, followed by Liz Stevens. You're up next, please.
Good evening. I'd like to speak on two topics. One's more pleasant than the other. First, I acknowledge all the hard work and dedication Michelle Shane put into making people aware with this great movie, 21 Mile. The phrase "picture speaks louder than words" can be more true. It's what made what happened to the unfortunate four girls painfully comprehensible to our government agencies, representatives, and general public, which helped greatly. Last week, when Ben Allen, Doug Stewart, Steve McClary, Michelle Shane, and others went to Sacramento and accomplished a Herculean task of getting the speed cameras over a huge hurdle that almost assures us, or almost assures Malibu will get speed cameras. On behalf of myself and quite a few others, I'd like to thank you and commend you. Second, see, Steve, I said something nice. McClary, I'm joking. I'm joking. Okay, Sycamore Park. Okay, all of you know what's going on. It's been well-publicized in quite a few places. The rules apply equally to everyone. They're spelled out in our LCP. You know what to do. You know what needs to be done. Thank you.
Thank you, Howard. Liz, you've got six minutes, I believe.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate the time and you paying attention to what we have to say because we feel it's very urgent what's happening right now. Again, my name is Elizabeth Stevens. I live in Sycamore Park. We do have some serious safety issues, not only for the residents in Sycamore Park, but also for the world of the internet. These users are being invited by the MRCA to use a non-existing trail on Villa Escondido Drive. The thousands of tourists who are already often distracted with the extreme vehicle speeds, the beach traffic, parking for restaurants, the ingress and egress from the neighborhoods, motorcycles and bicyclists, are all now expected to navigate parking for the MRCA trail to park on PCH without any authority or any consideration of safety. Malibu welcomes over, as all we know, Malibu welcomes over 15 million visitors and tourists a year on a 21-mile stretch of highway on PCH. The state of California and the city of Malibu are heavily invested into the public safety of Malibu's PCH safety project, yet we have a state agency, MRCA, ignoring the public safety and developing its own rules. Apparently, MRCA is above the law. It often uses and weaponizes the Coastal Commission against residents. I happen to be one of them. And often, it usurps the city of Malibu. The MRCA is knowingly and intentionally violating the city of Malibu's LUP, LIP, zoning, and municipal codes. The MRCA is ignoring the safety of the public, the safety of the residents, and the rule of law that the state of California and the city of Malibu are working so hard to secure a safe PCH. First, let me state there, as Craig already said, there is no final judgment in the case of MRCA in Sycamore Park. And also, too, the city of Malibu is not involved in our litigation. The city of Malibu has its own rules regarding trail designations and development, and we are simply asking the city to enforce its rules. I'm asking the city to ask the city manager, the city attorney, planning director, code enforcement, public safety, to enforce the LCP, the LIP, zoning, and our municipal codes. Please have the city file a notice of violation with the MRCA to stop using fake maps with green lines depicting Villa Escondido as a public hiking trail, the haunted house trail on Villa Escondido, which does not exist. Please refer to Resolution that was created in May of 2016, 1619, that Craig had shown you. Only the city of Malibu has the authority to designate a trail. The city's LIP defines what uses are allowed in each zone in the city of Malibu, not the MRCA, and not Coastal or anyone else. The development by MRCA is on a private property of 6100 Villa Escondido Drive in the rural residential zone. I'm asking the city, where are the code violations to this property owner and the MRCA? The owner cannot give permission to the MRCA to create development on a private property, which is 6100. MRCA's violations have been committed intentionally and knowingly, and as records show right now, MRCA does not have clear title to the property at 6100. So this property owner is also in violation and needs to be addressed. Public Resources Code Section 30600, prior to development, a permit is required, and because the city has a certified LCP, the development permit application is to be with the city prior to any development. And this is the Public Resource Code 30519, 30600. The MRCA is trying to bypass this permitting process by usurping the city of Malibu and going directly to Coastal to apply for a CDP. The city of Malibu has jurisdiction for the permitting process. Please don't allow Coastal to take over the city of Malibu. We just want you to enforce the rules again and the development that is being done, that is being done with permits. As Craig said, on June 10, the city informed the Rangers, the city had Ranger Tim come in here and inform you that they're going to use it. I actually personally spoke with the person who is running the paving project over on Murphy Way and Winding Way. He specifically told me that at no time has the footpath traffic been interrupted. They may be slowed down or whatever, but the path going to Winding Way for the falls access has been open. In fact, some of the private owners' driveways have been blocked because of the paving, but even the residents need the footpath to go ahead and access their own homes. So with that said, what I'd like to also end up is if the city can address that, with the advertisements on the World Wide Web, we are open to the world that he is advertising us to. The development of an illegal trail needs to be addressed by the city. The erection of an unsafe turnstile, the installation of a park, directional signs, all this constitutes development under the Public Resource Code and demonstrates that the MRCA's use will change the intensity and density of the private property of 6100 Villa Escondido Drive. So I just ask you at hand if you can address these issues with the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Liz. Craig Cullen.
Hello, my name is Craig Cullen. I live in Sycamore Park, have since 1978. I'm the other Craig, and I'm the one that gets nervous when I get up in front of one of these things. But I, instead of repeating what other people have told you, I'd just like to show you what kind of support we have, and if everybody here that supports this cause, will you please stand up? I think you can see our concern, and I would like to, you know, pass this on to somebody else that has something else to say. That's all I really wanted to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sir. That is the last speaker slip I have. Any hands?
There's one raised hand from Ryan.
Ryan, you're on.
Several things I wanted to address. The temporary use permit 24-020, which is for 22706 Pacific Coast Highway. And in the permit, there's a diagram which repurposes part of Pacific Coast Highway for particular use conducive for the permit duration from 7:00 AM to what looks to particular use conducive for the permit duration from 7:00 a.m. to what looks to be midnight. And that's 140 to 150 feet of what used to be uses available to the general public, and by restricting it to more exclusive uses for the applicant, it's removing at least seven parking spaces from public use. And that would require an encroachment permit from Caltrans, and I believe that was not done. I don't know what staff was thinking that they could do that without Caltrans approval. I inquired at the PCH Task Force meeting last week. Caltrans was not even aware of this temporary use permit, let alone, I think, sign off on it. We need to be very careful of anything that affects Pacific Coast Highway between Memorial Day and Labor Day. We actually have a prohibition of doing filming activities or lane closures or even parking big trucks on the side of the road to film a movie during this hectic time in Malibu. So I want to move on to the next item. That is really accountability. You recently conducted evaluations of city staff members. It's a regular thing to do. But work product is also very much important for this city. And I have to say, when we have a growing and an 800 list of code enforcement, old and current code issues, well, I had to send an email to staff and say, can you reconcile that list with the burned houses from Molsi Fire? See if you can knock a few off the list. Well, we'll see what happens there. Regarding the four-story hotel project that was heard by this council and probably never should have had been heard because it should not have passed go. It did not comply with underlying zoning based on the description of uses and the definitions the plane meeting in the code. That was a big problem, and it was an expense, and got the town all riled up, but for very good reason. Also want to say, look at City Council Policy Number 20. That's the private property rights issue of the council. It would help Sycamore Park. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Any other hands?
There is one more hand that was raised, if you want to hear it.
Go ahead.
Nicole McGinley.
Nicole, you're on.
Hello, Mayor and Council. Thank you all very much for your time and energy that you dedicate to the city. I'm actually chiming on in something very different than I normally call about, but today I was dropping my daughter off at junior guards up on Zuma Beach. And I'm not sure, and I was hoping maybe when you guys are discussing things, if I could have some direction where to go with this, but the trash cans were overflowing, and there was so much rubbish throughout the Zuma parking lots this morning. I was agas. My daughter was as well. I mean, and we thought about it, and these were the trash cans that were in the parking lot, and we couldn't imagine what the trash cans were doing that were on the beach. And I've never seen it like that before, so I'm not sure if something had happened, but I was just wondering who it was that is in charge of monitoring the system down there because it's just so much plastic and rubbish that's just right there at our ocean, and we've just had lunar tides, and I just, I hate to think about us contributing to the plastics and the ocean problem. So I just wanted to call it to your attention. I don't know if anybody else saw that this morning, but it was really bad. And with 4th of July right around the corner, I just thought to chime in. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Nicole. All right. With that, we're going to close public comment, bring it back up to the council table. City Manager, you're on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. To address the last speaker, Zuma Beach is under the responsibility of L.A. County Beaches and Harbors. We will pass along your complaint to them regarding the excess trash in the parking lot. On with my report. Happy to report that we are getting ready to begin our new parking enforcement. The new parking enforcement team that we are gaining through our contract with LAZ Parking should be operational by mid-July. However, I'm happy to report that they are going to be able to provide some early assistance to us with their existing staff for the 4th of July weekend. So before they have their full team ready for Malibu, they're going to bring some folks out just so that we have some additional parking enforcement for the 4th of July weekend. The LAZ Parking Team will include three staffed vehicles during peak hours, seven days a week, and at least one staffed vehicle overnight during the summer. To assist with the training, LAZ personnel are scheduled to meet with the sheriff and volunteers on patrol representatives this week and do a ride-along with the VOPs. Happy to announce that we've had some good progress in Sacramento. I think it's mostly old news now, but for those who didn't catch the good news on Senate Bill 1297 to allow speed cameras in Malibu, it did pass out of the Assembly Transportation Committee last Monday. It was a hard-fought battle, so don't be too confused by the 12-1 vote or 13-1 vote. It was a struggle to get there, but we were very glad that the Assembly Transportation Commission saw the value of the bill and moved it forward. This pivotal legislation will now move ahead to the Assembly Privacy and Consumer Protection Committee for further consideration, so it still needs to get through a couple of committees before it can get to the Assembly for votes. And if it can get through there, then it needs to go to the governor for signature. The proposed systems would be strategically placed in five high-risk areas in Malibu's 21-mile stretch, where speeding poses the most serious threat to public safety. Data gathered from other communities and countries that have successfully implemented similar measures show an average reduction of 41% in fatal or incapacitating injury crashes. Wanted to especially thank Bridget Thompson and Michelle Shane, who both testified before the committee last week. Bridget, of course, is the roommate of the four young ladies who tragically lost their life that night on October 17th. And of course, Michelle Shane, the producer of 21 Miles, who's been a great supporter of the efforts here for the speed cameras. And moving on with PCH Safety, we are getting ready to launch, or announce the launch of the city's Pacific Coast Highway Safety Education and Awareness Campaign, Cruise Malibu, Surf Sand Slow. Please join community members, city leaders, law enforcement, and partner agencies for the community launch event this Thursday, June 27th, at 5:00 p.m. at Malibu Bluffs Park. Primary objective of the campaign, of course, is to foster a culture of shared responsibility among all road users. Campaign is designed to address unique safety challenges posed by Pacific Coast Highway, which of course serves as a major artery through Malibu for residents, commuters, and tourists alike. Highlights to the event will include welcome remarks by Mayor Irving, a presentation and panel discussion from our PCH Campaign Focus Group. We'll also have a live question-and-answer period, and of course, we'll have our pledge wall inviting folks to sign up to the pledge campaign, to take the pledge, "I choose to cruise PCH at or below the posted speed limit in Malibu," and those who do will receive a Cruise Malibu Surf Sand Slow gift. Also, related to PCH, Caltrans has announced a community workshop, a couple of community workshops, for the PCH Master Plan Feasibility Study. There's going to be an in-person community workshop on Thursday, July 11th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., and that will be here at City Hall. There will also be a virtual community workshop on Thursday, July 18th, from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. And at this meeting, Caltrans and the city invite you to discuss the proposed PCH Master Plan Feasibility Study, which will be aimed at identifying safety and multimoto travel improvements for all users of PCH. And then there will also be a preview of that at the joint, at the city's Joint Public Works and Public Safety Committee meetings, which is going to be this week, Wednesday, June 26th at 5:00 p.m. in City Hall. So we'll be hearing a preview from Caltrans at that meeting as well. Moving on, regarding Malibu community lands, we have held all of our community outreach events. Last one was held on June 13th. We have done the analysis of the feedback that we received from the community, and that was used to develop the survey questions. The survey questions have been finalized, and they will be going live next week as part of the Flash Boat. Those who have signed up for Flash Boat will be receiving a text message and an email prompt to participate in the survey, and so far, we have 501 residents who have signed up to participate. After we get through that, we're looking to do a Phase 2 outreach set to launch in August, and then the outcomes report from that is on target to be delivered to the city council at the second meeting in October. Want to give council an update on what we're, on the progress that we've made working with the Malibu Film Society. Over the past two weeks, staff has worked with the society to secure dates for three monthly events from July to September. These events will include a panel discussion, feature film, and concession area. The Film Society is currently working on its ticketing system to ensure that 50 tickets are reserved for Malibu residents. As soon as the system is updated, announcements regarding the screenings will be made public. The city will have two full-time and two part-time employees working the events, and we're looking forward to announcing that as soon as we have those dates set. Also wanted to, moving on to some public safety information, just wanted to put congratulations to Malibu Canyon Village for becoming our fourth firewise community, joining Malibu West, Big Rock Mesa's, and Malibu Country Estates. So good job to Malibu Canyon Village, and happy to report that we have five more neighborhoods in the process. And again, not only do firewise communities protect the safety of their community, but their resilience helps protect all neighborhoods around them. And let's see. Just wanted to note that I attended another mediation session for school separation last week, and we have another one scheduled following week. And also just wanted to note that our next regular city council meeting on July 8th, that will be the time for the reorganization of the city council. So at that time, the city council will be choosing its next mayor and mayor pro temp. And then a couple of, some information that might not be too interesting to the public, but maybe more interesting to the council. We've been keeping a close eye on the, on a ballot initiative that the League has been very much opposed to, and happy to report that the California Supreme Court recently ruled unanimously to remove this Taxpayer Deception Act from the November ballot. So that was a success for the League of California cities, so that will not be on the ballot this November. And lastly, just wanted to note that the city's minimum wage will be going up effective July 1st by 2.2% to 17.27 cents for all employers. And happy to take any questions, and I also want to note we have Sergeant Soderland here from the Sheriff's Department to give a report.
If you had a question, okay. Anybody any questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sergeant, your timing is excellent. I mean...
Good evening, City Council.
You did good.
Thank you. It was a busy weekend this past weekend, I'm sure we all saw. So there's a couple items to talk about. First, with the heat wave that we had, the Malibu search and rescue team had the busiest four-hour period in their entire history. They had four back-to-back-to-back-to-back rescues undertaken in the hills from Malibu all the way to Amundson's Ranch, and all five people were rescued over the weekend. So they worked in conjunction with State Parks and L.A. County Fire and were able to assist those people. Good reminder to hydrate. I know we're not used to the heat, so when the heat happens, you need to hydrate and be prepared, so. Moving on to the beach, this past weekend, in all of L.A. County for the beaches, they saw over a million people visiting. So the estimate was 1.16 million people visited L.A. County beaches this weekend. L.A. County Life Guards did 380 ocean rescues and provided medical aid to 436 people, and they also took 200, or I'm sorry, 27,000 preventative actions, which are identifying grip currents or dangerous areas of the beach. So we were out there helping them along Malibu's beaches, so it was a very, very busy weekend. Finally, the traffic. There wasn't any major traffic incidents, however, the traffic was gridlocked this weekend. Parker, if you have a picture, can you bring it up? So this was taken yesterday from that point right there, which is the entrance to Westward Beach Road. It took 45 minutes to get to Canaan. So we have traffic deputies out there to keep the traffic flowing, except it was just an exceptionally large amount of cars this weekend, so. But fortunately, there wasn't any major accidents, so I'm thankful for that. Finally, I wanted to express my gratitude to the city and to the elected officials for pushing speed cameras. They passed the state senate, and so we are well on our way. When we told it wouldn't be done, couldn't be done, and there was no way it was going anywhere, and here we are now. So I want to say thank you to you guys for beating the drum and voicing your opinions, and we got it done, so keep on moving. And then finally, on this Thursday, we are rolling out our PCH Safety Campaign. We've had a focus group for the past several months full of law enforcement, Pepperdine students, locals, and I think you guys, if you attend at Bluffs Park on Thursday at 5:00 p.m., you're going to be very impressed with what we are putting forth, so happy to take any questions, if anybody has any...
Questions, comments, anybody? Steve?
I don't have a question or a comment for Sergeant Soderland, but if we're done with that portion, Mr. Mayor, I did want to have the city attorney address one matter regarding some of the questions that came this evening regarding MRCA.
We'll come back to that, okay?
Thank you.
Anything for the deputy. Thank you very, very much again.
Thank you.
You guys do a great job out there. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, let's do the MRCA. Trevor?
Sure. So it's important to understand upfront that MRCA did not approach the city or ask permission or approach the city at all about what their plans were over on V.S. Candito. And at our last meeting, the city council was actually told that access was needed along this area because the Winding Way Trail was being closed. This is actually, I've been told this is not true, and access to pedestrians remains open on Winding Way. And it's important for the public to understand that that, that that area does remain open. That is an area that has a parking lot and has accommodated a number of visitors in the past. In very, in strong contrast to the area in V.S. Candito, this is an area where, given the amount of visitors and traffic the city sees on Winding Way, directing them to this area where there's not infrastructure or a parking lot is very irresponsible and not safe. And on top of that, based on the information we've received, it appears that the MRCA's actions do constitute development in the coastal zone that is not, that requires a CDP, and one has not been applied for or obtained by the MRCA. So we've been working together with the planning department, the city manager's office, and a letter will be going out to MRCA addressing these issues. On top of that, code enforcement staff have been up in the area gathering information and documenting what's going on up there, and the Sheriff's Department has also been informed of the MRCA's actions and the potential for public safety impacts in this area from sending people into a very constrained area that's not set up for this kind of infrastructure. So that is underway, and we're hoping to, you know, see some changes as a result of this very quickly.
Trevor, any questions? I'm working, the letter to the, oh, Paul, go ahead. Sorry, you first.
Just, is it, what kind of laws are there about summoning an emergency call for the fire department and an ambulance and everything, and then refusing service?
I don't know the details of what went on there exactly, if there was an emergency and then someone felt better, it wasn't needed, or, you know, what the situation was there. I just don't know.
Thank you. Go.
Trevor, this letter that's going to be sent, is this a cease and desist letter? What kind of enforcement action is it, and will it be public?
I believe the letter will be shared, it will be shared with the public after it's been sent.
But is it going to be a cease and desist, or what's it going to be?
I don't want to characterize it as one type of letter. It's going to address a number of different issues, and I think it's better just read once it's been submitted to MRCA.
All right. Thank you.
I'd like to follow up on that. I do think, I mean, we've got a whole bunch of people here. I guess the question is, what is the... I guess the question is, what is the letter going to accomplish? What can they walk away with saying, if we write the letter and we send it to whoever and how we're going to send it to, what benefit do they see out of that?
Sure. You know, all code enforcement action does start with, you know, a notice and reaching out to obtain compliance. And that is, you know, in any type of situation, especially when there's development without a coastal development permit. On top of that, the purpose also would be for MRCA to work with the city when it does intend to open new trails or new development or take action that would have strong impacts on the public or on the community, and encouraging them to work with the city proactively and cooperatively, rather than springing things and coming in to the city and creating situations where frankly, a number of negative impacts and unforeseen impacts can happen.
So they walk home tonight, and they say, when this letter gets sent out, how's my life getting better? How do I answer that? I think that's a good question.
Sure. Well, I mean, any letter is not, I mean, it's, this is the way that the process starts in order for us to, you know, see change happen on this area or in any area, is by reaching out communications and putting people on notice.
Yeah, I'll get some more comments when it gets to my turn. All right, thank you. Paul, you want to go first?
I'm ready to get in.
Okay, Mary Ann?
Sure. I'll start first with what I have done recently. I attended a Clean Power Alliance retreat. For those of you who don't know what Clean Power Alliance is, it's how you get your power, many of us. They are procuring green power from a lot of resources around the United States in order for our grid to be more beneficial to the environment. So it was a great retreat between all the different cities. They are the largest community aggregate to acquire power in the United States, and they've done a fantastic job, and the city was one of the early signers on with this. And now we're one of, I want to say, most of Los Angeles County and moving into Ventura County, so it's a great success. I also attended school district separation mediation meetings, and then is continuing to evolve. And I'd say one of the best things that I get to do as a City Council member is attend the graduation ceremonies for Malibu High School and Malibu Middle School. And we have fantastic children in this community, and I am always so proud to see what we have going on there. I did get a few phone calls, obviously, from the members of VS Candito, and I'm quite concerned with what's going on there. I'm happy to see that the city is, starting with the letters, I know it's just the first step in that, and I know it's disappointing to the residents to hear that it's starting with a letter, and, but that the city does need to follow the law, and this is how we start the process with this particular thing. It's not going to be the last thing the city does, but it is where we have to start with this. I did have a couple questions. The city manager mentioned the flash vote system. I know we've had some concerns with different residents about the information that's being asked for by residents. It's my understanding that they are asking for neighborhoods, age, other things like that, so that they can get an idea of the people who are completing the survey, so we get a complete idea of who is participating and making sure that we have a wide input from the community. Is that correct?
Yes, that is, that is correct, Councilmember.
So I would encourage everybody to try and give as much information on that as possible. I did have a question about street sweeping. I see that we have in here, or I saw on the city website, there's a request for qualifications for a street sweeping company. I just wanted to verify, we are still doing street sweeping currently, because along Westward Beach and Birdview, there is a huge amount of sand that's accumulated in the right-of-way, and it's impeding traffic. So I just want to make sure that our street sweepers that we currently have are actually out there on a regular basis and taking care of that. Regarding the county in Zuma, the restrooms, I've received a number of photos about overflows from the restrooms, so if we can follow up with the county and beaches and harbor and see what they're doing in order to facilitate that they're not polluting the environment out there and that they have proper disposal of all the waste for all the visitors. Also, I got a call about wildlife and the curve just west of the fire department. There's a number of plants that are, that appear to be in the right-of-way. They don't seem to be getting trimmed back, so it's just one area that's an issue and a problem. And then regarding the, with Sea Star, did that have an approved CDP that included an ADU on it?
In researching the permit, it did appear that the planning commission granted a CDP with an ADU on the second floor.
Okay, so is staff able to work with the homeowner to facilitate some type of design change or something that we can get them? I'm, I'm asking, I'm hoping that staff is going to be working with our homeowner so we can come up with a solution on this, so we can get the C of O while they're still resolving their problems. So I'm looking to planning and building safety to come up with some type of solutions if possible. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann.
And that's what I've got. Thanks.
Sorry, Mary Ann, thank you. Bruce?
Sure, thank you. All right, there's going to be a number of things here. First of all, I just want to thank everybody that spoke, as well as those who wrote to us. I have some things that I was going to address that haven't been discussed tonight, but I'll start with what has been. And I think since we have so many people here that spoke about Sycamore Park, that deserves the first discussion. I don't agree that all we can do is what the city attorney just said we can do. And Mary Ann's statement that this is the necessary first step. I mean, I guess it's, it's one of the first steps that's available. People tonight raised a number of interesting legal issues that I don't know whether they're right or they're wrong, but they all sounded like they had prima facie validity. And I'm sure you've all done a lot of research, and I know some people are being aided by council, so it wouldn't surprise me if a lot of the things that were said are actually, actually will bear fruit. We can't act as a matter of brown act. I mean, tonight, we can't, we're not allowed to do anything. We're only allowed to hear your concerns, and we can generally discuss those concerns, but we can't take action because it's not on the agenda. But once it's on an agenda, there may be things that we can direct the city to do that are beyond what the city is going to voluntarily do without our input or direction. So I'd actually like to ask for a consensus from the City Council that at our next meeting, we have an, or, yeah, I think it needs to be the next meeting, that we have an agenda item to discuss whether to give direction to the staff to take legal actions of the nature that you're describing, and in fact, we'll have a hearing. Don't clap, please, please. But I was going to, I'll comment about the clapping in a few minutes, but I appreciate it, but don't. You know, I think we need to have a hearing. Whether we take legislative action, so you all can come and you can present for as long as you need to, specific details of what actions you are looking for the city to take, why you believe they're appropriate for the city to take, why you believe they're viable, fruitful legal actions or other types of actions. The MRCA will have to have an opportunity to refute what's being said, and we'll have a discussion, and we can decide whether or not to take any action. But I'd like to have a consensus from the City Council to have that hearing.
I agree.
I mean, I agree.
Okay.
Looking forward to it.
With respect to the clapping, I just want to note, Mayor Pro Tem, soon to be mayor, did say at the last meeting or the meeting before that, that the City Council protocols discourage that. I don't mind it. I think it's perfectly appropriate for you all to clap, to boo, to express yourselves however you want briefly. But apparently, the Mayor Pro Tem thinks it's, it's okay to clap when it's something that he thinks is positive, and he discourages it when people are, when people are clapping for something he's opposed to, and I don't think that's fair. We either have to have a rule that everybody can do it with if they want, or you can't do it at all. So since the Mayor Pro Tem thinks we shouldn't do it at all, I think we shouldn't do it even when it's something that people, yeah, jazz hands, thank you. Okay, so, and just with respect to VS Candito, I say, I lived in Sycamore Park for a year and a half while my house was being fixed from a, an incident. I also lived on the other side of Sea Vista. It's a, and it's a great, quiet neighborhood. It's much quieter than where I, where I live all the time. I'd love to live there still. People are walking their dogs, people are strolling, even some neighbors that have horses are riding their horses on the street. It is absolutely not supposed to be a public thoroughfare. And whatever we can legally do and practically do to help, I'm going to be in favor of doing it because it needs to remain a quiet residential neighborhood. That's why people bought their homes there. Mr. Cantor, I, obviously, we don't know enough about the details, and it's, we're not here to micromanage the planning department when it comes to those kinds of things, but I'm going to join Mary Ann in echoing that if something can be done appropriately to get you in your house, I would encourage them to do that. I don't know whether what you're being denied you have a lawful right to or don't have a lawful right to, but if you have a lawful right to it plainly, it ought to be granted. But I don't know what the lawsuit is about, so I empathize with your situation, truly do, and all we can do is express our encouragement to the city to do what it can to lawfully get you into your home. I hope that occurs. I think that addresses the major public comment. This morning, Adrian Fernandez sent a letter to all members of City Council as well as...
Point of order. I don't think it's appropriate for us to be discussing personnel matters in open session. Thank you, Paul. Adrian Fernandez sent a letter...
I would recommend also not discussing personnel matters here, it's also not on the agenda.
Appreciate the recommendation.
That letter is now all over the internet. Okay? Just so you understand, I told you it was going to happen, but it was public, and so we're not talking about anything that isn't already out there.
I appreciate the recommendation, but I'll respectfully decline.
It's not agendaized, we shouldn't be doing it, it's bad HR.
Paul?
I've been receiving a lot of comments from the members of the public, and I'm reporting on what's been going on. So this morning, Mr. Fernandez sent a letter to all members of City Council, as well as Baker Tilly, Doug Clevinger, all members of the planning commission, Richard Maleka, Trevor Rusin, Patricia Salazar, and Steve McClary. Clearly, it's a public record. In a cover email, he wrote, "Dear Councilmembers, please read the attached letter. In this letter, I bring to light the abuse and dysfunction experienced by planning staff and the root cause of it. My hope is for you to bring a positive change to all of this. Signed, Adrian Fernandez." I could be wrong, but the letter appears to me to have been written by a lawyer. The only thing that gives me pause about that belief is that the letter is over the top in its rhetoric and the fact that the letter was sent to so many people that it's now a public document, which suggests to me that the letter is designed to bring about political objectives as much as it's designed to set up an employment lawsuit. The first paragraph of the letter includes the following statement. Quote, "The last six weeks have been a private hell for me and my family. I've experienced death threats, personal public attacks, and private verbal abuse from many sides. I too have been the object of death threats, personal public attacks, and private verbal abuse stemming from my work as a member of this City Council, including attacks facilitated and even made by members of the city staff and other council members. Accordingly, I can empathize with Mr. Fernandez. Nobody should have to suffer that. And I suspect that every member of the City Council shares my view." The balance of the letter, however, alleges a grand conspiracy that's based upon multiple untrue, unsupported, reckless, and potentially libelous accusations. The arguments in the letter are premised upon the alleged impropriety of multiple public stances taken by the mayor, myself, planning commissioners John Maza and Craig Hill, the Malibu Township Council, Joe Drummond, Pat Healy, and other residents who have vigorously advocated for the protection of Malibu's fragile environment through allegiance to the general plan, including Malibu's vision statement and mission statement, which some people spoke about tonight. An allegiance that appears to be routinely abjured by Mr. Fernandez and some other members of the planning staff in favor of developers and other special interests. To the extent the defamatory accusations in Mr. Fernandez's letter pertain to the actions of public figures, such as myself and the mayor, they're shielded by a relatively high bar for defamatory statements made about public figures. To the extent that Mr. Fernandez's letter makes defamatory statements about private residents, there could be exposure to litigation for Mr. Fernandez for publishing the letter. He didn't have to send it to the public. If Mr. Fernandez were to commence a civil suit based on the conspiracy theories spun out in his letter, the suit would be subject to an anti-SLAPP motion. For those who are unfamiliar with that concept, SLAPP, S-L-A-P-P, is an acronym for strategic lawsuits against public participation. When a lawsuit is brought that's based upon the exercise of free speech rights, the action is subject to dismissal through a special motion to strike. The action will be dismissed if the plaintiff doesn't survive a form of strict judicial scrutiny, and the plaintiff will be required to repay the defendant's attorney's fees." I'm going to, I'm requesting consensus, oh, the final paragraph, in the final page of the letter, the following statement occurs. "The conduct by the city violates many aspects of California employment and governance law must be stopped." I think that that is a, that statement cries out for an investigation. I'm going to request that we bring back an item directing the city to commission independent investigation of the allegations in the letter, as well as the claims of members of the public of favoritism of certain developers and their representatives by Mr. Fernandez and other members of the planning staff. I think we have to investigate this since allegations have been made of legal improprieties, and I'm requesting that the City Council agree to bring that back so that we can formally direct the city to investigate this in an independent way. Can I get a consensus for that?
I think before we bring it up for the City Council to make an action on it, I believe that there is a need for council to be involved to see what our responsibilities and rights are on this. I would encourage us to bring it back once we know what we're supposed to be doing legally. And by the way, I would be eager to do it as soon as possible.
Anyone else?
Sure. I am never, I've never found it conducive to peace and quiet to throw gasoline on a fire. I have no interest in going forward until there is something to have a meeting about.
Anybody else?
I believe the city has a legal obligation to conduct an investigation, and I think the City Council ought to direct it to do that, but if we can't get a consensus, can't get a consensus.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm in. I mean, look, this is going to come up. This is going to be an election issue, all right? Someone's going to take this thing and make noise about it. And I mentioned after Trevor, this is the second letter we've gotten, all right? And I mentioned after Trevor that this thing goes public, there's going to be hell to pay. And apparently, nobody paid attention. So I think we got to get this thing resolved and covered. I mean, what in it is true, what in it isn't, as opposed to somebody bringing it up later on and making a bunch of hay out of it. So Trevor, what are we going to do? I don't want this thing hanging out. Look, I'm more than happy to go public and start commenting on this thing. You told me not to do that, right? We're not going to just sit back and let it go without nothing, so come up with a solution.
Well, Mr. Mayor, the letter did arrive this morning, and there is a meeting currently with staff and council set for tomorrow morning. We will provide an update to the council after that meeting, and then if the, if the council wants to set an agendaizing item, we'll have the opportunity to do so in the future, but I would suggest receiving the...
So we will get a report back tomorrow?
The meeting's tomorrow, we'll get a report back from what happens there.
You...
Well, I, we can provide an update tomorrow. I don't know the extent of what's going to happen at that meeting, but we can provide an update to the council about that meeting, absolutely.
Yeah, I'd like to get an update tomorrow, we should get that out. Anybody else?
Yeah. Those of us that have worked in the corporate world know that HR restrictions and requirements are very, very detailed. That's my reason for asking for legal counsel on this. State of California has some very immediate trigger points that if you have a harassment claim, workforce violence claim, sexual harassment claim, these are all trigger events for immediate investigation and a report and action steps. And that's the reason why we need to get legal counsel on this. I wish we weren't doing this in public, but we are, and because of that, we'll take, we'll probably be more exposed to litigation than we want at this early stage, but so be it. The idea of the county, of the city attorney giving us back a recommendation, we can take whatever action is recommended by the HR attorneys. So that's where we're going to go. That's where I'd like to go.
Who's going to be in that meeting tomorrow, Trevor? Who's going to be in that meeting tomorrow, Trevor?
There'll be members of the city manager's office, HR, and city attorney's office, and also our employment attorneys.
The employment attorneys will be here, okay? Mary Ann, you were going to say something?
When you say you're going to report back, is that just going to be a private report to the City Council, or is that a public report?
We'll provide an update to the council, confidential attorney-client update.
Thank you.
All right, I'll move on to the next item. There's been discussion tonight by some, in fact, Mr. Howard complimented Michelle Shane, and I echo that compliment. Michelle has asked in the past for the city's participation and cooperation with enlarging his education campaign, using the movie and other things that he's working on as a springboard for further education within Malibu and then beyond. And I had thought that the city was going to work with him to develop that potential partnership. I understand from Mr. Shane, and what he told me may not be accurate, I can only report what he told me, that that has not gone anywhere as of now. So I would like to encourage the city manager and city staff to work with Mr. Shane and bring back to us a proposal for some kind of a formal program that the city can sign off on and join with to help education about PCH safety and make it safe. I know we're doing a lot already, but Mr. Shane actually has been doing a lot as well, and I think it would be well-served to partner with him. Would you like me to respond? If you wish to.
Yeah, we are continuing to work with Mr. Shane. My deputy city manager is working with him, so that is still on the table, and we are still working towards something, I'm happy to report.
Okay, well, I know the wheels of government turn slowly. I come from private practice where the wheels turn much more quickly. I'm hoping that they'll turn a little bit faster. Last point is the city, well, the city's time with the pool at the high school. We've in the past had many speakers here who've discussed the chasm between two local swim clubs to use the pool. I understand now there's a potential third competitor for that time, for the limited time, and I also understand now that the city is doing some kind of a process to determine what one party should get access to the pool, at least the favored access. I don't know if that's accurate or inaccurate, but that's what I've been told. I don't know, and I'd like to know, at the end of that process, is the City Council going to be consulted as to what the recommendation, is there going to be a recommendation to the City Council, or is there going to be a decision by the city as to who gets to use the pool and when?
I could ask our community services director to come forward and give a report on that.
She was doing that on her own. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Good evening, council. We went through the Parks and Recreation Commission to come up with an RFQ process for the swim contract. And so we are right in the middle of that process. Last Friday, we received all the RFQs, and we have contacted six individuals who are, who have been in the aquatics industry for a number of years, so they have a lot of experience outside of the city. So we're asking those individuals to bring us back their recommendations, and after that, staff will evaluate it and determine the next steps. But hopefully, by that point, we will award the contract.
Okay, so I appreciate all that information. It's the last part that I'm looking for some greater clarity on. When you say award the contract, is the city staff going to award the contract, or is the city staff going to recommend an award to the City Council, who will then award the contract?
So our plan was to work with our ad hoc from the Parks and Rec Commission to provide those details, and possibly, we haven't decided yet if it's heads and tails. If one organization is high above the rest, I think that we'll go with their recommendation. If it's tied, then we'll bring it back to the Parks and Rec Commission as an update.
Okay, well, I'm going to request that, and if I have to, I'll ask for consensus at a future meeting to put this on the agenda. I'm going to request that the staff determine to submit this at the end of the day to the City Council before an award is made. That's how it worked with the road race agreements, which also were the subject of an ad hoc at the City Council level. No decision was made until we had a public hearing, and I made a decision at the City Council level, and I believe that's occurred with many other contracts. Multiple contracts go on our consent calendar, so at the end of the day, we have to approve them, vote them up or down, and I'm hoping that since this one is the subject of so much community investment, that the same will occur here. Thank you, that's my...
Can I respond to that quickly?
Oh, absolutely.
So we looked at the calendar. We anticipated we would get into a contract with the swim organization by July, allowing us to enter into a contract for the fall season. If we were to bring that back to council, we would not probably award that contract until September or October. So if that were the decision of the council to bring it back to you all, we are looking at potentially having a fall season with maybe not as many, with both swim organizations that are currently there using the pool.
Okay, well, for what it's worth, my independent, you know, one person speaking, my view is it's been working for now, the compromise, and I would prefer to see a public process before that compromise is abandoned and a new process is struck. We're going to have an hour and a half to two hours of comments after that comment, after that contract is awarded. If we don't, we might as well have the public comment for two hours in advance of making the decision, rather than having it be an after-the-fact complaint by whoever doesn't win. I just think it's better for everyone and for transparency and the way this small town works to have it done publicly. But again, that's one person's view.
Well, I mean, Mary Ann, please.
Could you explain, I believe in the spring, we were able to accommodate both teams because there wasn't any water polo going on. Do we anticipate that the same for the fall, or is water polo going to be, and so there's going to be limited access?
You are correct, Councilmember Wiggins. Water polo is expected to come back. We're also adding two additional swim programs in the fall season, so there will be very limited pool space to accommodate both organizations if we were to do so in the fall.
So it sounds as if by having the Parks and Rec Community ad hoc make a recommendation on the awarding based upon this professional review, it's going to facilitate more cohesive swimming in the fall for Malibu residents?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Well, Doug?
You know, to carry on, just a quick comment about that. If it would be possible for us to have something at the first council meeting in August that we could approve, take your recommendation and approve it, that would be a good idea, if we could do that, not have to wait till September. Just hopeful. All right. Councilmember Silverstein made the comment about clapping. I'll bite into that, and most of the people left that were clapping, so, all right. It's not that I agree or disagree. Let me tell you why I was in favor of this, and still am in favor of it. And we still have a policy. In 1998, and by the way, I believe Ken Kersey was on the council at that time, passed a resolution stating what the decorum would be in the meetings, which is consistent with most other city and government bodies, and that is that there's no demonstrations, no applause, no interruptions. Now, you can go, well, gee, I'd like to back my program or whatever, I want to stand up and show my support. Problem is, it intimidates those that might have a counter position, and that's one of the reasons for that. And, you know, if you're being derided because you made a statement by other people clapping or booing or whatever, it inhibits free speech. And, you know, we're seeing this today in some of the activities that are causing police interactions and so forth. So all we're trying to do, all I'm trying to do is to have us follow the resolution from 1998, consistent with most other cities, and let's just keep it to a very formal decorum. I equated a lot to what a judicial courtroom would be like. So that's...
You'll be mayor next meeting, so you can do what you want.
You can tell us a comment, it's a conversation up here. By the way, I appreciate the support everybody has, but just remember, you're intimidating, potentially intimidating those on the other side. Trash cans on Zuma Beach. Actually, this morning, our resident go-getter, Merrill May, already had the pictures to the county supervisor three, Lizzie Horvath's office, telling them that their trash cans are overflowing, already got a response back and said, "We're going to give it on top of it." So it's already in action. Speakers on VI Escondido. As some of you know, I don't live too far from you. I know exactly what the situation is on your street, and just sending a letter doesn't seem like much, but it's part of a process to start, and there's other things we're trying to do. It's not just for you, it's for everyone that is facing the issues on MRCA. Trying to see what we can accomplish, get it done legally. There's some steps we have to go through, and I would tell you that we'll be active on VI Escondido, and we'll see what else we can do for the other people that are involved. And I'd like to leave it at that for the moment. Quickly on what I've been up to, I went to the land use meeting at Malibu West Clubhouse. It was at 10 o'clock in the morning, and I know there were some comments made that nobody's going to want to show up and so forth. There were 30 people there. They actually appreciated, a quick conversation to have with people, that it wasn't at night. Gave them a chance to do this during the daytime. So it is good to spread the time allocations around as we're trying to build a consensus. I understand the Dick Van Dyke event at the high school did very well. I was unfortunately conflicted on my calendar. I would have loved to have gone. If anybody's a Dick Van Dyke fan, it's me. But I think it also presented an opportunity to see the Malibu Education Foundation and the Shark Fund in action, raising money for the school. I'd like to ask that we put on future calendar for the council, that the Malibu Education Foundation, who we've provided some seed money to, to get started a fundraising program for the future and current school system, for the Malibu schools in the school system, to come back to the council and give us an update on where our seed money has gone, what they're accomplishing, and let us have an update from them. We're sort of like the venture capital seed investors on this. We'd like to see how we're doing with our money. So I'd like the leadership team, the board, officers, whoever, to come back to see us for a presentation in the future. Doesn't have to be war and peace, just give us an update. We also provided money to the Fire Brigades, and I'd like to ask them to come back and talk to us as well. No hurry, but it's probably time after six months for the Malibu Education Foundation and recently for the Fire Brigades to come back and show us what we're...
Do you need a consensus on that to bring back in August?
I don't know if about August, but I think just, let's just have it on the calendar for the city staff to put it on, or we can...
Well, I, I, okay, I'll wait till you finish.
Okay, I'm open-minded either way. We talked about the Assembly Transportation Committee, June 17th. I want to thank Michelle Shane and especially Bridget Thompson. Those of us that were in presence, that were present there, we were in trouble. 1:30 in the afternoon, we were going to lose that bill. Through the efforts of a bunch of people that care a lot about public safety on PCH, including Senator Allen, Assembly Member Erwin, and a number of other people that were in support of our camera operation, pulled the rabbit out of the hat, and at the last minute, we got a consensus to approve. We're not over the hump yet. We still got the, we still have the Privacy Committee, we still have the Assembly, we still got to get it signed by the governor in reconciliation. So we've come a long way. I've said this before up here, three, four months ago, we thought we had a 10% chance. Now we're looking a lot better than that, but it ain't over till it's over. But for Bridget Thompson, if you get an opportunity to see the faces of the Assembly members as she spoke for two minutes, that's, if we were close before, we were over the hump because of what she said. I mean, I will tell you, there wasn't a trial in the room, including mine. And it was really something to have her passion and firsthand knowledge and basically imprint on everybody on that Assembly committee, that it could be their children, their family, their friends. So we're working diligently to get that done. Other topics, Harriet Pollan wrote a memo reminding us that trucks, primarily tractor-trailers, are not permitted on PCH. It's four-axle trucks. They can make local deliveries, but they can't drive through. The recent fatality with the tanker truck was someone that did not have, he was returning from a delivery up at Port Wanemi, I believe. He shouldn't have been on PCH. So I'm going to ask the Sheriff's Department sergeant, and also if we can pass along to the Highway Patrol, we are unique in Malibu. We have this provision on PCH that you're not supposed to have four-axle trucks. So if they see one that looks like it's not supposed to be here, because it's a shortcut for the trucks, let's ask them to not be on our street and remind them with a ticket. Parking enforcement, I can't wait for the contract people to hit the ground. I refer to them and thinking a memo to the city staff as the cavalry is coming. I can't wait to hear the vehicle. Let's get them over here. We've got people that are abusing our parking system, even right now on beachside parking with the RVs and the campers, as well as people that are all over the place. And speaking of that, I want to mention, Sergeant did it really well about the picture he had. I've driven by Soho House in Nobu the last Saturday and Sunday in the afternoon, and everybody on the northbound side that's trying to turn into the parking lot there is blocking the traffic. So it backs up, it actually backed up past Webway and up to the top of the hill on Sunday. And they're turning in, they block the street, and the people on the right-hand, on the eastbound side are still trying to get in. The parking lot is full. And you say, well, gee, we ought to put some signs up. I hate to say this about our visitors, but I don't know what people don't understand about the sign that says parking lot full. As I went to Santa Monica, all the beach parking lots there all had signs that said they were full, and they were doing exactly the same thing. So, you know, I appreciate the Sheriff's Department's problem, but, you know, giving tickets for blocking the street would be a wonderful idea. With that, that's all I have. Over to you, Mr. Mayor.
Hey, thank you very much.
Steve, if I might just volunteer one thing?
Please.
I believe in giving credit when credit's due, as well as criticizing when criticism's appropriate, and I think Doug is being humble when he does include himself in the people that have been responsible for us getting the speed camera legislation pushed to the point it is pushed to. So actually going to request that we give him a round of applause, because he's been very helpful in that. Thank you.
I like the hands better, the jazz hands, yeah.
Very good. All right, let me just, again, I want to thank all the speakers. Let me just talk about Escondido for a second. And I guess I'm just disappointed that it's taken us this long to do anything. I got emails last Sunday, Sunday before last, with pictures of what Edna Snell was doing up in Escondido with the turnstile and the photos, and I got that off to the city on Sunday night. I wrote another email to him on Monday, wrote another email to him on Tuesday, just suggesting that we should try and do something to help these residents out, something that would, you know, have an impact on what's going on in Escondido. And as you heard today, we still don't have the letter written. I mean, I don't know how long it takes to write a letter, but we're just, you know, somehow we got to get better at what we're doing. Our job is to protect and to service the residents. And if, you know, if you can't do that, then we're doing something wrong, and we better figure out how to get it fixed. So I'm sorry that, you know, for all the emails that I got and the phone calls that I got and people saying, geez, what the hell's going on? I couldn't get more done, but, you know, I tried, and hopefully as we move forward, be able to improve upon that process. So I thank you for your patience. Okay, last meeting, we talked about the city planning department was going to change the process for doing staff reports, and we're supposed to get a report from somebody to explain what that change was going to be. Have that, have you guys seen that yet? I have not seen that.
Still working on that, Mr. Mayor. We had a number of things come up last week that demanded staff's urgent and immediate attention, so I'm sorry we were not able to get to that yet.
Somebody mentioned Nobu. You know, Nobu got their temporary use permit for 4th of July, and we hope the city's going to keep their eye on that one, because everybody in the community is. So hopefully we can get things settled. Education Foundation, the only reason I like to, you mentioned, let me go back. So far, the funding we've provided to the Education Foundation has gone to Karen Alharden, I think, right? She's the one that put the plan together, that has given us the reports back, and we sort of understood what's going on with that. We knew where that, the whole process was. That has changed over the last week or so, or however long it's been, just a whole new board, there are new people on board. I don't know what they're, whether they're going to follow the same path that Karen had, how she's going to get integrated and what's going on. So the sooner I think we can get a perspective of what they're going to do and how they're going to do it, makes us better fiduciary guards of the money that we put in there. So I'd like to get it back here as fast as we can.
I'm in agreement with that. One of the conditions that we had in the approval for the... One of the conditions that we had in the approval for the grants and for both the Fire Brigade and the Malibu Education Foundation is that they establish a 501(c)(3) and have a board of directors. And I think that, I know the Education Foundation has, and that's what I'd like to bring back. So I agree with you, if they want to bring it back, maybe early August.
First meeting in August would be great because we got some money going out to them too. And I sort of like to make sure I know where that money's going before we send it out the door, so.
Fully agree.
Okay, maybe if we can make a point, set up first meeting in August, that would be great.
It would just be their presentation to us.
Yeah, find out what the hell's going on.
We'll reach out to them immediately. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, I don't want to spend any more time on this damn hotel stuff than we've already have. But let me just go, you know, when I got on the city council, over the first two years, we're kind of rocky. We had Paul, Mikey Pearson, and Karen Farer, who we were playing high school with. I mean, they wouldn't let Bruce become mayor, they wouldn't, you know, every meeting was sort of, we were fighting with each other. We didn't get a whole bunch done. And the residents really didn't like that. And I think when Bruce took over the mayorship, I mean, he turned it around and made these, these meetings a little more professional. Right, we gave everybody a chance to talk. We didn't yell at each other. We don't always disagree, we don't always agree. We've learned to disagree professionally. And that's worked pretty, I've tried to do the same thing. And that worked pretty well up until last week. You know, we didn't have any personal attacks. And then last week, Paul wrote a letter in the Malibu Times. And it's interesting, here's a man who says, you know, I dislike personal attacks. And to demonstrate how much he likes them, he wrote a letter in the Malibu Times with a personal attack against me. You know, you got to, that stuff, hard, it's hard to understand how that takes place. So I'm not going to spend a whole bunch, this is, we got an election coming up. And I assume, you know, it was going to be much more of this stuff as we move forward. I'll spend my time dealing with it once we get into that process. But as you read these letters and you see all this stuff, keep one thing in mind. The only parties who do not protest some of the activities and the decisions being made by the Planning Department are to developers and council member DeCresanti. But just keep that in the back of your mind as you read all these letters. With that, anybody else?
Yes. Thank you for your ringing endorsement of being collegial up here and never making personal attacks. I would, earlier today, I thought we were still only talking about the things. So I never said what I've done in the last two weeks. On the 11th, we had the high school graduation Mary Ann and I were at. And then again, on the 12th, we had the middle school promotion, which Mary Ann and I were at. On the 13th, you and I, Steve, attended the Webster School Bond Feasibility Study Group. And then on the 15th, I, my wife and I bought tickets to the Dick Van Dyke event and were there. And I was eating my cookies when I was accused of, you know, loving those free cookies. And I told Steve I'd paid for them, which he was alarmed by. On the 16th, of course, we all had, oh, on the 15th, I went to the, that was the Dick Van Dyke thing. And after I left the Dick Van Dyke thing to go to the emergency preparedness fair up in Corral Canyon, where I had the opportunity to speak to Lindsay Horvath, as well as the people who are doing the Fire Brigades. On the 16th was Father's Day, and I hope everybody had a good one. Met with a gentleman who wants us to do an email program about traffic safety, which I forwarded on to the, to the city manager. And on the 18th, I spent an entire day from nine to five in a school separation mediation with Mary Ann and Steve and Alexis. And then, of course, we had our special city council meeting, which lasted no time at all and which I really appreciated. And I want to take a moment to thank Merrill May for sending those pictures out. I think he actually sent them out Saturday night. But they got an answer back to him about Zuma Beach on, by Sunday afternoon. And the first gentleman that spoke talked about a grant to repair the Adamson House. I haven't seen the letter. Does anybody know how much of a grant he was looking for? Has anybody seen that letter? Okay.
I don't think you wrote a letter, but.
Okay. All right. And, and thanks to everybody who spoke. And I too got tons and tons of pictures of everything going on in Sycamore Park. And I'm glad to hear that there's some further stuff going on about that that we will hear about soon. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Very good. Steve, we need you some chocolate chip cookies for next time we have a long meeting. Make your life a little bit easier. All right, let's move along, on to the consent calendar. Anybody pull anything? Kelsey?
We don't have any speaker slips from the public and we don't have any raised hands. I'm sorry, we have one raised hand in Zoom.
Joe Drummond.
Joe, do you want to pull anything?
I wrote today about item 3B9.
3B9, anybody else?
I'd like to pull 3B4 for just a quick clarification.
You agree with that, I was going to do it myself. So I got 3B9, 3B4, anybody else?
There's one other raised hand from Robert Brinkman.
Robert, you want to pull anything from the planning committee or from the consent calendar?
No, sorry. I was going to comment on something else.
Okay. So can I get an approval of the consent?
I would like, I just have a quick question about 3B6 and 7.
3B6 and 7, so can I get an approval of the consent calendar excluding 3B4, 3B6, 3B7, and 3B9?
So moved.
Second, all in favor? Eyes have it. Okay, 3B4, who pulled that one?
That was me. Let me pass on to the Safety Director. All I was trying to get there is we've got some comments about the performance by service unit rather than overall response. And exactly what are the levels of service we anticipate receiving this coming year? And I know in times past, we've had some grids and so forth showing what was expected service, number of patrol cars, motor units by date and time. Just wondering where we are on that, that's all.
So the service level is done by minutes. And we request like coverage of certain days and times, and they do their best to meet that ask. But overall, the contract in the 574, which is their service level, you know, agreement from here to here, it's about minutes, but it's minutes for each unit. And the change in the contract, apparently some cities get their service level compliance because every month you get a report that says, we were, you know, supposed to give you this many minutes and this is how much we provided. And then it's a percentage of compliance. And what they wanted was that that broke down into the unit levels so that it wasn't just all lumped together. Because we have, you know, motor deputies, regular patrol deputies, special assignment deputies. And apparently, like, I haven't experienced it here in Malibu because actually when I look at it, I can see unit level, but apparently maybe some cities are seeing it all lumped together. So my understanding is that they wanted it in the contract so it's spelled out that everybody gets their service level, service level minutes broken down by the units so that you could see at that level. Does that answer your question?
That does, but it leads up to the next part of my question. And that is, is there anything to prevent when they're behind them stuffing, say, the last week of a month in order to meet the service level goals? Or is it spread out, can we see if it's all spread out for the entire month?
Yeah, it's not really easy to see, but you can. Like, there's a system that I have access to so I can go in and see how many deputies were assigned each day. I can look and see what they've been doing. So you can kind of monitor it. It's not a simple report though, which after, you know, rereading the contract and some of the statements, I am wondering if maybe they're going to provide a simpler report where we could see that a little better. Because right now you have to go down deputy by deputy and look at, you know, each shift. So it's not simple. It's not just like a form that reports it. But we do have access to that information right now. We've had it for a while now.
Okay, well, the $64 question is, are we getting our money's worth?
Yes, I mean, I can tell you, I, I look at the service level, they call them transparency reports. Steve gets them, I have access to it, and I check it every time. And they're usually at compliance or over slightly in, under all our units.
Okay, thank you very much. That's, that's all I had a question on.
I got one quick, anybody else? Mary Ann? A real quick one, and I don't have the detail. But some of the other cities are trying to sue the Sheriff's Department for something, okay? I mean, is our contract get us out of that problem?
No, it's a, it's a separate issue that I can't really comment on.
Okay, gotcha. Anybody else? I need approval for 3B.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Done, 3B6, Mary Ann, was it? 3B6, you got it. You're on.
I was just waiting for the Public Works Director to take a seat. I just was looking for some clarification. This item is also, is it the same item that's listed in the capital improvements for next fiscal year? Or is it a different portion?
This is included in next fiscal year. There's a portion of it, funding wise, will carry over to next year. We have part of this project when we close it out. We have to wait 30 days to release retention. And so budgetary purposes, this project will continue till next year because we got to pay out the retention.
Okay, but it's completed and it's not.
Correct.
It is on the capital improvement project for budgetary reasons, but no physical work is going to occur and no additional staff time is going to be necessary to monitor the project.
Correct.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve 3B6.
Need a second?
I'll a second.
All in favor? Eyes have it, 3B7.
On this one, I, I just heard from the community. They're having a problem on some school sites on holidays getting access to the schools for recreational use, being able to use the fields and other things like that. And I don't believe the school is able to provide somebody to open the gates. Is it possible that this contract can be amended further to allow for opening and closing of the gates at the schools on time periods that the school is not able to provide somebody to do that?
I think that's through our master use agreement. In the past, the school district has not allowed city staff to have access to their facilities. So we, as a department, pay for staff from the school district to open those facilities on the weekend.
Okay, so as I was saying, is it something that we can look into? That this possibly we could work with the school district to?
We can have that.
Be similar personnel?
Sure, we can have that conversation with the school district. I honestly don't.
I understand.
Yeah.
Just as long as, if, if the council is amenable to that, that residents have been having trouble accessing those sites on the holidays. So it would allow our residents a little bit better use of the existing facilities in our community. With that, I'll approve 3B7.
Need a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Eyes have it, 3B9. Joe, I think that was you, right?
Hi, yes, can you hear me?
Gotcha.
Okay, thank you all again. Thanks for attending the high school events and everything and our graduation. My son graduated, he's my last one, my baby, 11 years in Malibu High, I can't believe it. So anyway, I did write this afternoon about the conflict of interest code and policies that this is, you're supposed to be reviewing as staff for, for you all to approve. I do believe that Councilmember Riggins and Councilmember DeCresanti should be recused from this vote because they are under investigation by the FPPC right now, and that's already a bias. So I'd ask that that could happen. And as well, I would strongly recommend that you get in front of this investigation and revise the municipal code to prohibit development professionals, principals of construction companies and architectural firms from making any development decisions in the city. As we know, when contractors and owners or directors or related companies are on the planning commission, there is an obvious conflict of interest. They could have construction building, electrical plumbing, grading companies. And the key owners and managers often are decision makers on development products for local applicants. So a local contractor making decisions on development in the city is compromised because he or she could either in advance or in the future have a direct working relationship with the applicant. And this doesn't apply only to direct business relationships, but also referrals that all the businesses routinely pass on to one another. And Malibu is a small community and therefore has a limited number of businesses in each professional and developmental field. And the likelihood is great that contractors or principals of other related businesses will end up working together or referring business to each other or relating to each other in business matters. So I just thank you for your consideration on this serious issue. This is, this will have major consequences, not only for the look and personality of our beautiful city, but also the honor and justice with the city does its business. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Any other hands?
Those are all the raised hands.
Back to the council table. Bruce?
First of all, it's my understanding that Paul and Mary Ann are not under investigation. The complaint was filed against two members of the Planning Commission. They are mentioned in a letter from the FPPC, but they're not under investigation, nor is the city manager or the acting city attorney. I think that there's some legal nicety that people are taking advantage of when they say repeatedly that council members are being investigated. They're not. If they are, we have no public knowledge of that. The other thing I'll say is, my understanding is that this item on the agenda is a very narrow exercise. It's one simply to make sure that our local code is consistent with whatever the state law is. It doesn't get into the nuances of what the code means, which is really what the FPPC is investigating and what would take a very large effort to try to codify all the nuances. That's what courts and agencies do, not with, not with city councils or even the state senator assembly does, unless they actually want to amend the conflict of interest law to make it more specific. I don't think we should be amending ours to be more specific than the state. And we should wait and see how the investigation plays out. If no one else has comments, I'll move to approve this item.
I have a couple of comments.
Okay, I'll move to prove it anyway.
I'll second you on it. I, when I saw this, I called Kelsey and she, I'm not going to speak for her, I'll let her put her comments in. But I believe this is a very narrow application just for city employees to comply with determining who's supposed to file at Form 700. Is that correct?
Yes, so the Political Reform Act requires the city to adopt a conflict of interest code. It's not a code of conduct. It lists all the positions which are required to file Form 700 Statement of Economic Interest forms annually. It's for staff positions. The Political Reform Act itself requires council members, as well as the Planning Commission, to file these statements.
Yeah, and along that same line, I also asked Kelsey, I said, so usually in business, you have a employee handbook that has, among other things, the conflict of interest, confidentiality and so forth. And the city apparently does. We have a 1992 Code of Ethics that was a resolution by the council. There's also an Employee Code of Conduct from 2013 that fully covers all this. So it, it sounds like the city is well covered with its documentation. And all of us that are elected or appointed are governed by the state's requirements for Form 700, correct?
Correct, the city council, Planning Commission, as well as the city manager and city attorney are required under the state code.
Okay, so I have a second into Bruce's motion.
All in favor?
Even more narrow than I understood.
Mary Ann?
So Kelsey, is this your item that was placed on the agenda?
Yes, this is my item. I wrote the staff report is for the biennial review of the conflict of interest code. The Political Reform Act requires us to review it biannually. And you, as the council, are required to direct the city manager to initiate that review. So this is just the initiation. We will look at the code, we will look at new staff positions such as. We will look at new staff positions, such as the ones you're scheduled to approve tonight. And then we'll bring back either an updated code or a report that no changes are needed.
Great, thank you.
Anybody else? No? All right. Got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. All right. Done with the consent count. Let's move to item 4A, wastewater services charges. All right, my friend's back. Very good.
Rob doesn't even come up with you.
I know.
Good evening, Mayor and council members.
Glad to have you again.
My pleasure. This evening, we're here to conduct a public hearing for wastewater service charges for, to levy them in the county assessor's office. This is for the operations, maintenance and management of the Civic Center water treatment facility that is located on Civic Center Way. And this is for fiscal year 2425. These wastewater service charges will offset the proposed budget of 2.2 million that will facilitate the operations and maintenance of the treatment plant. That's about it.
So that concludes your report?
That concludes my report.
Any speakers, any speaker slips, any hands?
We don't have any speaker slips for this item or any raised hands in Zoom.
Okay, no speaker slips, no raised hands. Let's bring it back to the council table. Any comments, questions?
I'll make a motion to approve item 4A.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. 4B. Proposed budget.
All right, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. Tonight is the fourth of four times that this has been in front of you for consideration. I will go pretty quickly since you have seen most of this. And just as another reminder, the budget is really just a point in time. So even when you adopt the budget, it's a point in time. It's an organic document and we will adjust it throughout the year as we go along. So there's always a chance for further appropriation throughout the year. Quick reminder, we'll go over the calendar and how we developed the budget. We'll touch on all of the changes that have been made over the last couple of months, the revised summary of revenues and expenditures, our fund balance, the CIP, and your recommended actions for tonight. So we are now at the final stage or adoption in June. And this is a long process. It's taken us six months to get here. And we've had a few different iterations in front of you with the budget workshop in April, the A and F review of the budget and general fund grants, the public hearing at the end of May, and now the adoption. So some of the areas where we got direction, since the very first iteration of the budget was to put some additional funds in the budget for community lands, some additional funds for speed cameras, the second phase of the Malibu Education Foundation. There were some revisions to the general fund grant program, inclusion of a director for the start of a community development department, the review, a request to review our facility use rental rates to try to maximize the rates that we charge for the use of those facilities, taking a look at Wi-Fi at the parks. This would likely be a larger project that will need more review. Looking at a dog park at Los Flores, this had actually been considered previously by the Parks and Rec Commission. And we reported back to you that at that time, it wasn't considered feasible and to look at different locations. We had gotten, received direction on looking at naming rights. We will be coming back at a later date on a policy on how to address naming rights for properties in the city for potential fundraising. There was a request to get an update on our debt on vacant land. This is reported in our act fur, but we are going to try to put together a consolidated table and provide a memo to council. Excuse me. Direction last meeting at the hearing was to come back at some point for consideration on a reserve fund policy that's more nuanced than our current policy. So we will be coming back at a later date with that. And then there was also a discussion on the Snack Shack and staff taking a look at possibly increasing the CIP budget for the Snack Shack. We currently have 200,000 in there. After looking at it further, we don't really have a good estimate on how much the Snack Shack will be. So we're leaving it at 200,000 for now. But at the time when we need to come back, we can absolutely appropriate more funds if needed. But we really just don't have a number at this time. So we left it at its current level. So the modifications that have occurred, we added 200,000 for our community lands project to keep that momentum going. We added 200,000 as an initial amount for speed cameras, assuming we are able to get legislation passed. The Malibu Education Foundation, they requested a second phased amount of 315,000 in the next fiscal year. We already funded them in the current fiscal year. And included in that are some monies for some of the schools that did not submit with the general fund grant program to be part of that effort. There was some discussion at the last meeting about modifying our general fund grant program. So now we have 100,000 for the community brigade and 25,000 for state parks. And then, of course, we included the community development director for an additional FTE. And then some modifications on the CIP side, the Bluffs Park South Walkway CIP, that one increased slightly by 23,000, just based on updated estimates for that project. The permanent skate park, we added almost one and a half million. And there was initially about a million in that project. We just anticipate that most of that project will be able to be done in the next fiscal year. So we adjusted the project amount. And then the Equestrian Park roof replacement was an individual CIP item that actually is consolidated with the Bluffs Park roof replacement project. This was really a duplication of projects, so we removed that. That's really more of an administrative item to correct. And then on the disaster recovery capital side, we made some adjustments. These are based on projects that we anticipate to be completed in the next fiscal year that will be fully funded with disaster funds. So those have been updated as well. That's the Clover Heights Storm Drain at nearly 2.2 million and Westward Beach Road shoulder repair at three quarters of a million dollars. So what do our total revenues and expenditures look like? We're now at just about 86 million in total revenues. That's all funds. 62 million of that or 72% is general fund. And our total expenditures are 99 million with 77 million or 78% being general fund. The general fund revenues are just shy of 62 million. As I just mentioned, that is mostly made up of property taxes and other taxes. As we've mentioned before, property taxes are our biggest revenue source and most stable revenue source. And then our other taxes are our sales tax and then our TOT. And those have been fairly stable. TOT is at about 9 million in our budget. And then our sales and use tax has increased and continues to grow based on the TUT measure that we passed in 2022. And as, excuse me, as the city manager mentioned, the state ballot measure will not be on the ballot this fall. So those funds are not at risk of being lost, which we were concerned about previously. And then for the departments, we are at a total expenditure budget of 60 million. Again, with our largest departments being public safety and management and administration. So where we fall for our ongoing revenue and ongoing expenditures, we're at about 59.4 million for ongoing revenue and about 58.9 million for ongoing expenditures. That results in just shy of a $500,000 surplus that we have set up for the next fiscal year. Our overall impact on fund balance, we anticipate to end next fiscal year at 69 million in our undesignated reserve for, in a total general fund, fund balance of 83 million. And the 69 and a half million is about 115% of our general fund expenditures for next fiscal year. On the personnel front, we have just about 120 total FTE. The total staffing changes this year are about four and a half positions. We're adding a management analyst position, part-time deputy city clerk, administrative assistant in public safety, part-time senior permit services tech, a maintenance worker in community services, reduction into part-time, which really fluctuates every year based on our part-time needs, and then the community development director. The general fund grant application, so normally we would do 200,000. And that was allocated or recommended by A and F at the, recommended by A and F and then discussed at the hearing last month. Based on the recommendations, that has been adjusted down to 188,000. There was some shifting where we added the California State Parks for 25,000 and then adjusted the brigade up from, I think it was around 30,000 to 100,000 on a separate line item and also a separate line item on the Malibu Education Foundation of 315,000. So with the grant funds program and the two separate line items, we are just above 600,000 in total community grants. And with our budget, we have to adopt an appropriations limit or otherwise known as the GAN limit. We are under our limit. So in '23, '24, our appropriations limit was 33.5 million, based on the adjustments for population and per capita adjustments. We have gone up to 34.7 million. And then there are some exclusions that apply as well. Those are mostly based on our debt schedule repayments, any capital outlay, essentially any funds that are going back to community initiatives. That reduces your total limit or what is applied to the limit. And based on those calculations, we have just about 7.2 million remaining capacity on our GAN limit. Our CIP program, not going to go through these projects. You've seen this before, but we now have 29 projects at 24 and a half million, an ambitious goal for the next fiscal year. But of course, these cross multiple fiscal years, so these will be ongoing. And with that, your recommended actions are to adopt the budget, establish the appropriations limit, and adopt the authorized positions, salary ranges, and class specs for fiscal year 2425. And staff is available for any questions.
Any questions before we go to public comment?
Just a quick question on your GAN chart. Can you explain whether we've got a surplus? We've either spent too much or too little. I can't figure out from what you're saying if we're over or under.
We are under our limit. So we have, we are under the limit by about 7.2 million.
Okay, but what does that mean to be under the limit? Does that mean that we have not spent enough or we spend too much?
No, if we were over our limit, then that would be a cause for concern. So being under the limit is where we want to be. We never want to, we never want to exceed the GAN limit. So any number below our limit is a good place to be.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Howard, you're up.
Hello again. I'd just like to talk about one of the items in the budget, which is potentially merging the building department with the planning department. The last time we tried this, I lived through it. It was a really bad idea. We had to be, they had to be separated. If we do this, we will lose some of our best and brightest. We already have a shortfall in staff, you know, and that's enough. What that will mean is the lands that we all want something to happen with, wireless ordinance, fire rebuilds, will not get permitted. Code enforcement issues will not get solved. And the list goes on. The city is going to stop. I would like to see us take a pause and reevaluate. Go back and get some historical knowledge on why it was separated in the first place. There's no need to rush this. I'd like to make sure the understanding, as it's written, the majority of the city council needs to vote and approve the merging of the departments. Thank you.
Thank you, Howard. Any hands?
There's one raised hand from Joe Drummond.
Joe, you're on.
Hi, good evening. With regards to this budget, I wanted to commend the staff and the council for giving money to the fire brigades. Apparently 100,000 might not be enough though, because they need $2,000 a person, apparently, for just protective gear alone. And there's 200 applicants, so that's one thing. And the other thing is with regards to what Steve was saying about the Malibu Education Foundation, I also just recently found out that the board does not have any of the original people who created this fund and requested the monies and all of that. So I do believe that a whole board reset needs to happen. And they have to be fully transparent. Like, I can't go to a board meeting and I'm a parent, so I don't know why. It's very exclusive, not inclusive. So, and it just, the leadership needs to be questioned. And there are people like Skylar Peak apparently are on the board, which is, he's a, he doesn't even, he's never had kids in the school, so I don't know why someone who's being investigated by the FPPC is on there. And also with regards to what Mr. Bretsky was just talking about, I know that Baker Tilly did a whole study and they, they came up with that. So I would assume that it was a study to make the planning department more efficient was already completed. So that's all I have to say about that. Thanks.
Thank you, Joe. Any other hands?
There's one raised hand from Ryan.
Ryan, go ahead.
Yes, I wanted to agree that it was generally a fiasco when the last attempt was done to kind of cure some problems in the planning department by adding an extra administrator at the top. That's not what the problem is. The problem is you don't have enough workers doing the work in the middle and the lower level and having them being told the proper things to do, like not reinvent the code, but follow the code and so forth. And so it's been a manpower issue. And really, you need a recruitment effort for plating. And you need a turnaround artist to work for that department, maybe as a consultant on the short term. And that would possibly be an adjunct. I'm not sure why the Baker Tilly report is being discarded so quickly after it was completed. I know sometimes people don't like the result of a report, but I think it's important to go back and look at what was the problem. And adding more layers of administration at the top is not going to achieve that result. And it's actually a very heavy burden on the city's pension fund to do that. So I would urge you to stop considering doing that and address the problem in a different manner and maybe some outside help. Somebody could come in and say, like Dr. Harry Peacock said when he came here, he said to one of the employees, well, he said it in front of me. So I guess maybe somebody could say that was bad personnel. But he said, I don't care how long you've been doing it wrong. Do as I say. And he had 30 years. He was a doctor and in public administration. And those are very sage words. If somebody can come in and say, well, look, this isn't, you don't just need to add more layers at the top to solve this problem. Find out surgically what the problem is and address it. So thank you. Oh, well, last thing, on the budget, I want you to add another 2 million to the public safety budget because you may have options. The county may have some people available. You need to be at the ready in the budget for that purpose. We're way underfunded and under deployed, in my opinion. Having watched this for over 35 years in Malibu, you need to be at the ready to have the appropriate level of patrols in the city to stop the mail thefts and reduce the response time for people who have issues and some of the other issues of public safety. That's where I think you should put the money. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. I've got no other hands. I've got no other speaker slips. Back to the consult table. We're close to public comment. Okay, up to us, guys. Any comments, questions?
May I?
Sure, Paul.
I'd like to respond to a couple of statements from the callers. I believe that I'm correct in saying that Skylar Peak does have a child in the Malibu schools and actually went to the Malibu schools. So if he's on the board, I think that's probably a good part of localism because he's also related closely to a teacher in the schools. And the other thing I wanted to touch on is there's some comments about the 19-page report. So Joe, I'm going to ask you to turn to page nine of 19. And in the second paragraph- And in the second paragraph, you mentioned that we're, we're contributing to a pre-funding program through CalPERS to address the city's unfunded OPEB liability. Do we have any unfunded OPEB liability? That's post-employment benefits.
That's correct. We have an amount we have to contribute every year. So every year, we have a growing amount. I should say, our, we're pretty much fully funded for our retirement obligations. But every year, there's an amount that we have to pay our normal costs. So we do pre-fund. There's different terms for it, but basically a pre-funding trust that helps contribute to that, that grows some investments as well, so that we have enough money to cover that.
So we are not in the situation certain cities are in where they actually have liabilities that are unfunded and they're behind the eight ball. We're making our annual payments when they're due.
Correct.
Good. Then I'm going to ask you to jump over to page 11 of 19. And I see a one-time equipment expenditure of 120,000 for a pool office trailer. And I don't know what a pool office trailer is.
I'll let the Community Services Director respond to that. But I know we had a trailer that was in disrepair that needed to be replaced.
Okay. And it's not actually for a swimming pool. It's for other uses we might have for it, or?
Yes, so thank you for the question, Councilmember Grisanti. We have a pool office trailer up at the Malibu High School pool that we use for staff and our lifeguards there. And we have access to our recreation software there. We have uniforms there, those sorts of items. And so the pool office was in very bad disrepair after all the storms. So we needed a new trailer for our staffing up there.
Thank you. And the other thing under the environmental sustainability, we're talking about the exterior elevated elements program. And the one thing that I would like to mention is I'm getting calls from people who are trying to get someone to do their inspection. And they're having difficulty locating someone. The architects that they've contacted have turned them down. And they're calling engineering firms who are turning them down. Could we get a list together of people who have actually done the work and are willing to do the work so that people could refer to it and hopefully comply with our requests?
The city cannot promote, but definitely we can put a list of engineers on the area and other companies that are doing this type of work. We definitely can do that.
That would be terrific. Thank you. And on page 13 of 19, we're talking about funding for the skate park and how money, this is second paragraph, how money could be saved if the council would give direction to staff to pursue fundraising events for the new park. And I think that I'm confident that the rest of us up here will, will be glad to instruct the staff to pursue fundraising and events for the new park. So I don't know what we have to do for that to happen.
I thought we did that.
Well?
Councilmember Grisanti, I think we were referencing that there had been some guidance to look at naming rights for different properties, which we would be coming back with a policy on that.
I'm looking forward to it. Thank you very much.
Anybody else? Bruce?
All right. Well, first of all, I just want to commend the staff for all the work that's been put into this. I mean, this is the third or fourth time, I guess, beyond A and F. This must be the fifth or sixth time I've been hearing this presentation. I think for the public, it's the third or fourth time. And I think we've gotten to the point where it's almost a no-brainer, because we've hashed through all the items and gotten to this point. And I appreciate the, all the work that's gone into this. So, and I intend to vote to approve this unless there's some blips that people need to address. The only comment I want to make, this isn't to the staff, this is to the public speakers. The decision to merge the two departments and have someone at the top that there'd been some opposition to, that is the recommendation from the consultant that was hired. And my understanding is that decision to do this is committed to the sound discretion of the city manager. It's not a decision the City Council makes. It's, it's an employment matter. The decision to do it is committed to the discretion of the city manager. And the decision to staff it is committed to the city manager. The only thing the City Council does is decide whether to fund it. So I guess in a sense, it's the power of the purse is a, is a veto of sorts. But I'm not inclined to exercise that veto if the city manager believes it's a good idea to go forward with that recommendation of Baker Tilly. I've privately stated, and I'll state it publicly. I mean, I'm pulling for Yolanda to apply and get the position. I think she's done an outstanding job for the city. And I think her heart is in the right place in terms of development in the city. And I think she's got the capacity to turn things around. This is kind of a follow-up to the issues that we were discussing earlier tonight. So, but whoever it is, I'm hoping that this will be a successful effort and things will run more smoothly going forward.
Anybody else?
Some quick comments. On the speed cameras, we've got $200,000 allocated. I think by July 2nd, we probably are going to know if we've got a go or no go. And I would encourage the staff to pull the trigger as soon as they can. As we've told the people up in Sacramento, every day delayed could cost somebody their life. So let's, let's get those cameras going. On the vacant land debt, I can tell you that there's a general consensus in the business community to look at all debt, term debt, and see if it makes sense to refinance it, not refinance it, what's the prepayment? What's the interest rate versus the other rates? And people that are surplus money are either deciding to do something with it or not. We have some surplus money. I suspect that after we do the review, it's going to be that we don't pay anything off early. But let's at least make an informed decision. Relative to the Development Department, I believe Bruce has stated well that this is a power of the purse at the City Council level. We entrust the city manager to be the chief executive officer of the city. And I take some comfort in the fact that the Baker Tilly report was a recommendation to do this. And when you look at other cities, this is pretty much a general practice. So I don't, I don't have a problem with it. And hopefully, we all end up doing the right thing and it turns out well.
Anybody else? Mary Ann?
Yeah. I have several things. So the, the Equestrian Park roof replacement. Am I to understand? Is that going forward or is not? I was a little unclear in the staff report.
The Equestrian roof replacement will go forward. I think it's depending on if the school district is going to take over that property. But we have it still in the books to, to, if it's, needs to happen, go through. We have it ready to go.
Is there talk that they're going to take that back? I hadn't seen anything with regards to that, so that was new information. There is the, the case of the roadway, that there was fire damage on the guardrails. Are we going to repair that?
Yes, yeah, we can do that too. Yeah.
Okay, I just didn't see it outlined. And I'm concerned about things not being specified in the budget and then not necessarily being completed. So I'd like to see that written in to that. With regards to, thank you very much on that information. With regards to the skate park, do we have an update on the status of the plans? Are they completed? Are they getting ready for plan check? What's the, the timing on the permanent skate park?
Hello.
Hello.
So we did receive construction documents last week. There are several questions regarding the fuel modification. So we're working with the Fire Department and the help of Building and Safety Department to get those questions answered. And we hope to have 90% plans ready in the next few weeks for review.
So who's, it's Building Safety or Public Works doing that review on those engineering plans?
Both.
Okay.
Both.
So are they actually in submittal and being under review of engineers yet?
Not, not yet. We need to get those fuel modification questions answered first so we can get to 90% of construction documents finalized. And then they'll go to Building and Safety and Public Works.
Okay, thank you very much. Let's see. Sorry, I've got just a number of notes here, so. The Wi-Fi in the parks, it says, consider options for expanding free Wi-Fi in all the parks. Look for possible grant funds. Have we directed our grants consultant to see what grants exist for the possibility of helping supplement payment for Wi-Fi at the park locations?
Mayor, or, Mayor, Councilmember Reagans, I would have to get back to you on what conversations have been happening with the consultant. I believe our first step was to try to look at the feasibility of Wi-Fi in the parks, because there might be some difficulty in some of our, our remote sites. So I don't have an answer for you. We'd have to get back to you.
So do we need to direct you? Is there anything that council needs to do to get that underway so that we can get that evaluation to determine if it's even possible?
Not at this time, although we would have to balance it, obviously, with all of our other priority projects that the council has us working on.
So the work plan?
Correct.
I'm looking for that. Okay. There's an item here. It says skate park naming rights. I was just wondering if there's an appetite by the council to just take that to be naming rights, since we might possibly have additional buildings on our community lands that may get. So should we just keep it as a more generalized term and not be site-specific?
I support that. I think that's what we discussed at the A and F Committee, actually.
Yeah, and with the A and F Committee, what we said is it's probably something in a specialized area for the grant writer to move to about accepting or obtaining grants in return for having naming rights to the various projects.
Okay, great. Thank you. The, the vacant land debt schedule. Previously, the Assistant City Manager had said that it had been talked about in our other documents, the audit documents and such like that. So I read those. It looks like the vacant properties aren't tied to the certificates of participation specifically, but we just have a number of certificates of participation for the money and a various schedule of how those are repaid. So I look forward to that report. Regarding the reserve fund policy, I looked it up. The council requested a draft policy be provided. And we have currently policies three and five that do talk about reserve funds and also the use of other funds. So I'm just wondering, were those documents already looked at with regards to whether we need another draft policy for that?
Mayor and council members, we haven't looked at that yet to try to draft a policy to come back with. The guidance at the hearing was to start thinking about the policy and to return at some point with a policy. It wasn't that we were supposed to return tonight, but we haven't dug into that yet.
So Policy Three designates that we'll have a 50% reserve of the General Fund already.
Correct. We do already have an existing.
I just wanted to make sure that everybody in the council knows that already exists. For the Snack Shack, we designated $200,000 initially. I did look into the RFQ that the Public Works Department has out. And it only details the timelines to when the proposals are due. It doesn't have a timeline as to when the contract will be awarded, what the timeline is for submittal for coastal development permit, when the plans will be done. And that troubled me that there was nothing beyond the July 25th date identified. So I was hoping that council would look to try and direct staff to get a more detailed timeline on that. Talked about that already. With regards to planning, how many vacancies do we currently have in the Planning Department that haven't been filled yet?
Councilmember Reagans, I do not have the vacancy report in front of me to respond to that.
I believe it's eight employees currently out of the 29 budgeted.
Okay, and those range, are those primarily planners that are not filled?
That is correct. I want to say one is an admin position and the rest are planning positions.
Okay, great. Thank you. Talked about that already. Yeah, I did a little digging into the history. Well, the Baker Tilly report did recommend that we form a development department. You know, in the fiscal year of 2011, 12, it was decided to create two separate departments. And it, you know, it had occurred to recommending, I'm just wondering, what, what has occurred to recommend that they be rejoined? Other than the Baker Tilly report, what is it that has occurred that would make a combined department the proper direction for us to take?
Well, I'm not sure, Councilmember, how to answer the question. I mean, the, the Baker Tilly report analyzed a number of issues with the idea that we try to figure out what, what perhaps is, that we're struggling with on the development services side. I think they came into that with, with eyes wide open. And as you know, the Baker Tilly had a number of professionals who've worked with a number of different cities, different sizes. And so as part of their analysis and trying to determine the most efficient way that the city could, could provide its development services, among many recommendations, they, they did recommend that the, that the departments, that the Building and Safety and the Planning Departments be merged into a Community Development Department. I do support that recommendation. As I've stated to council, I've, I've seen that model work very effectively in other cities. And I think it would be very effective here. In addition, the, and I just have to say to council, and I think I've expressed this before, but my budget philosophy is generally to build from the ground up. I do believe very strongly that you need to have enough hands to get the work done, to provide that efficiently. In this case, in addition to looking at, you know, obviously, we need to get our fully staffed. But this would be a very key position that I think the city needs. There are a number of real critical decisions and oversight of the functions of both of those departments that really cannot be adequately done by the, by the executive team. I think it really deserves having an individual who can really focus their time on making sure that those processes are being delivered in the best possible way, that the employees' needs are being addressed. And I think this Community Development Director will provide the necessary leadership that we need to get out in front of a number of the issues that I know have been frustrating to the council members and as well as residents and applicants as well. So I hope that answered your question.
No, not really, because it, I've not seen how, if we're down eight positions that are actually doing the day-to-day work, how will that change by adding another management person who isn't necessarily going to be writing staff reports? Which is seems is the bulk of the work that needs to be done to get us caught up with all the applications and such that we've got.
Well, given the challenges of the, of the vacancies right now, I think you need to have a manager who can do their best to manage with what they have. And I think having the Community Development Director will be an enhancement to be able to ensure that they are looking out for all these various concerns and, and trying to look at ways that we can improve the delivery of our services. And I think it will also go a long way to helping ultimately boost the morale of those employees and making sure that their needs are addressed. So I can't speak to what happened in 2011. And I don't know what, what study they, they produced that recommended them to uncouple those departments. But based on my experience and the experience of others, as well as the my experience and, and the experience of, of others, as well as the Baker Tilly report, I am confident that this is a, a good, good fit and a, and a good, good way going forward for the city.
Well, okay. So in the 2022, 2023 budget, it included a department reorganization and a strategy to build capacity. So, and that was anticipated, it was going to be a three-year plan to further transform the department. The plan included three positions in fiscal year 2223, three positions in 2324, and four positions in 2425. But now we're talking about scrapping that three-year plan and going in another direction. What, what steps are we taking to ensure we have staff retention within the planning department as they go through this major reorganization?
Sure. Well, there's a number of things that I know that we've highlighted the council in the past that we're working on to try to address employee morale and retain employees. I'm not going to get, go through all that list today. You know, we, we've added a number of benefits to the employees. Last week, employees were able to enjoy the first holiday for, for June, Juneteenth here. But the, the plan to continue to make a priority to get these positions filled is, is not changing. And it still remains a high priority to get those filled. The reason why we haven't brought forward adding any positions this year is just because we're still struggling trying to get the vacancies filled. I know, and as Mr. Tony has explained, we've had done a number of things here to try to boost our recruitment and retention efforts. And I think one of the, the biggest challenges that we had for a while there was, was bringing in an HR director, and we now have that position filled. And that, that's, I think that's going to start, and it's starting to pay dividends for the city.
So I mean, when I looked at the city's website today, I didn't see any planning positions listed for recruitment. So how is it that we're not even recruiting for these positions if we're down eight positions?
Well, Councilmember Riggins, that might be a point in time. We've had many, many ongoing recruitments happening, recurring. There's more to come. We just went live with NeoGov, our new recruiting and onboarding system, which is also going to pay dividends. We're trying to do everything we can. And obviously, a key component in our recruitment and retention is the leadership and support of the city council. I know we've had many discussions with that in prior workshops, and we need your support going forward to continue to help us recruit and be stewards of the city.
When was the last time a planning position was advertised?
Probably just a month ago. I, I don't know off the top of my head.
And we didn't get any?
We, we have been. We've been hiring. We've been recruiting. We've been working staff through the system, going through their probationary periods. There's been, but there's been turnover.
When was the last planning person that was hired?
I, I, I do not have that in front of me, Councilmember Riggins. We can get back to you with that.
Okay. The other thing I find troubling about this community development is there was no job description included for the class in our booklet identifying what the, the skills required, the education required, anything else along those lines. And I find that really troubling that you're asking us to approve a position without giving us any specifications of what exactly the duties and/or education is going to be for this.
Correct. That, we were requesting the authorized position and funding. We will be returning at a later date with the job description and also how we're going to slot in all the other positions. We did mention that at previous budget discussions about how we need to take a closer look at where some of those other positions in the org chart would need to be slotted in to the salary schedule. So we would be coming back with a, an update on that. This is not something that's happening overnight. We did mention we were going to have to go through some additional review and study on how we would be rolling this out before we started recruiting.
So when are you planning on having this new department created?
When are we, it would start this fiscal year. We would hope, hope by the end of the year of this calendar year, we could start the recruitment on a director, but it would take some time. After tonight, assuming the budget gets adopted, we would be taking another look at where we would be doing our, because we already did a class in comp. Speaking of recruitment and retention, if you adopted budget tonight, our new salary schedule goes into effect July 1, which will absolutely help our recruitment efforts. And we have a number of positions that we're waiting for this adoption tonight before we go live with those recruitments to try to help on the recruitment front. But assuming you adopt the budget tonight, we would be going back and taking a closer look at where some of those positions in the suggested org chart would slot in, since those were not studied in our class in comp, because they were not existing positions and not an existing department.
I mean, that's really troubling to me. You know, I, I would encourage my other council members that I think we need to delay this creation of this position. We've got no information of what that is going to entail, what the, the characteristics, the job functions. We have nothing, but we're being asked to yet authorize a position that we have very limited, no information whatsoever. Additionally, you know, we don't have information about this development and how these other processes are going to be done. And I really would encourage the council to delay on this until there is more research done to truly determine if this is even necessary. The city had this before. They decided to break it up and go in a different direction and have two separate departments. And now we're just being asked to say, oh, well, we believe that now's the time to come back to this. And there's really, I don't feel I'm getting enough information that this is appropriate. And I just encourage the rest of the council to take some time with that because I, my biggest fear is that we're going to lose existing staff members and we're going to lose all our institutional knowledge because it does not sound like it's a well-planned-out change, which is going to have dramatic effects on our community and our city. So that's all I have.
Anybody else? Paul?
So Mary Ann, are, what are you requesting we do with the, we, we have a budget here. Are you requesting that the community development department portion of this is put on hold? Do we want to fund it now and put it on hold pending getting the additional information, which we hope, which we will either find useful or not? How, how do you think we should handle this?
Well, we've got three recommended actions in front of us on our little screens, which is to adopt the 2425 budget by the resolution.
Right.
Establish the appropriations, appropriations limit.
Right.
And adopt authorized position salary range and class specifications. Since we don't have class specifications, I would say, for the community development director, I would say that we omit that one and that at a future date, when there are more concrete information available with regards to this plan, then we can consider it at a later date, including staff retention.
Okay. So, Mayor, are we planning on doing these three recommended actions one at a time then?
I wasn't planning on it, but if that's what we prefer to do, I can do that.
So I'll make a motion to adopt the three, omitting the class specification and the creation of a community development department and community development director at this time.
I'll second it.
So that would be not to fund that position?
Correct.
Could I make a friendly amendment on that? I, I, I don't know that the state that I heard from Mary Ann and Paul was to not fund it at the moment, but let's put it on hold. And they're kind of talking about funding, actually having somebody in place until calendar year end. We'd have several months to do exactly what Mary Ann said. Tell us what the position is going to be, how it fits together. I think all we're being asked to approve at the moment is the funding block. So we can put that on hold to fund it in anticipation of approving it upon the receipt of a plan, a better, better plan. Is that what you're asking for?
No, I would say let's not fund it. I mean, we could, if, when we come back at the mid-year, we can make a funding recommendation at that time. But I don't think we need to, to fund it at this time.
I, I think, my only reason for not wanting to stop funding it, you know, we've sat here and said the planning department and the plant, and the whole planning operation between staffing and number of open cases and, and so on. I don't see this being a well, a well-oiled operation at the moment. And we had Baker Tilly come in and give us recommendations about how to improve. And one of those recommendations was to do exactly this. I agree that maybe this is, this is so major that we need to have a better understanding of what the, the four corners of the proposal are. But I don't know that we necessarily want to wait until year-end to decide if we're going to do it or not. I, I think we could make a decision sometime in the next, you know, few months.
And at that time, we can approve the funding. It's not, we have the authority to be able to approve the funding for various items throughout the year as items come up.
Bruce?
Well, I'm going to vote against deferring this. And I don't know if we should have the vote on that and see if there's three in opposition, or actually, I'm going to float a alternative motion to approve all three of these items and see if I can get support for that alternative motion. What's, what's?
Substitute motion.
Substitute motion. I will say, you know, I'm, I'm a supporter of it ain't broke, don't fix it, but this is clearly broke. We're not talking about a, a well-oiled machine here which ain't broke. We're talking about something which everyone agrees, even those who are opposed to this effort, is broke. And therefore, I think something needs to be done to try to fix it. This is what the recommendation of the experts that we paid a lot of money to is to do. It is the state-of-the-art, for the most part, in, in other places.
We're not other places.
Let me, let me make my statement, please. I have to say, based on the people who are objecting to it too, who for the most part are pro-development people, that it makes me even more believe that this is an appropriate thing to do to get control of what's going on. I think that the retention, the hiring and retention will actually improve once somebody is at the top who is fresh. And to use a sports analogy, I mean, we have a general manager here, and I think he wants to put in a new, a new head coach because the team's not performing very well. And I think it's time for a new head coach with a new philosophy, and we'll see how the new head coach does. We can always reverse course, but we have to do something because what we're doing ain't working. So my proposal substantive, substitute motion is to approve all of these things and leave the decision to go forward or not go forward with this proposal to the sound discretion of the city manager. All we're doing is setting, making available the funding to do it if the city manager decides it's the appropriate thing to do.
I would second that.
So the substitute motion was staff's recommendation?
Yes.
And then the vote then, there's the motion to second would be, this is the vote just to substitute that motion for the motion that was made by Councilmember Riggins.
Right. The vote is simply to decide whether to vote on the substitute motion or not?
So, you know, you made a sports analogy that the coach needs to be replaced. The coach hasn't had all the players to field a team and to actually develop a team in order to run the project, the, the team as a team can be to be successful. You're sending a coach out there with half the amount of players that they need and expecting them to do the job of a full team. So I, I think as a city council, we are letting our staff down by not allowing them and creating a team in order to complete this. There, there's been no evidence that this is the proper funding for Malibu. Malibu is a different beast. We encounter planning issues that are unique to our community that are different than every other community that there is. And I strongly encourage us to pause. It's already been said that if we fund this, then it's at the discretion of the city manager to move forward with hiring of this position regardless of our feelings on this. So that's why I think that we need to pause and get additional information and not fund the position at this time.
I don't think it's regardless of our feelings. I, I think there is some support for this position. But go ahead, Doug, you were going to.
Well, I, first off, I understand Mary Ann's position on this, and I don't appreciate the idea of saying it's either pro-development or not pro-development. We're just trying to, just like this gentleman had said, he'd been six years trying to get his house built. You know, we're not talking about setting up, you know, skyscrapers here. We're talking about getting people's plans processed for the residents. Look, we've had two years to try, the two years I've been on this council, we've had the same problem with staffing and so forth. And I don't think it's a case of a bad coach. It's not a case of a lot of things. But what they, what I think the Baker Tilly recommendation was, when I looked at it, is we're short the, the management hours at the top in order to allow the coaching and the training and the work with people to develop the staff for the city. And I agree with you, we're unique. And for that reason, you know, are, are we so unique that we can do this like no one else has done? They found it necessary to have a, a senior manager to, to provide additional leadership. I know we have a motion and a substitute on the table, but let me just say this. I think the right substitute motion is to authorize the money, but put a restriction on it, that it can't be deployed until the council has had an opportunity to review exactly what you asked for. But let's get on this, on the speed process for this and get it done sooner rather than later. And let's find out what the pluses and minuses are. And I, I, I think this, well, we don't usually see job descriptions and plans for all the other positions that are added. This one probably requires some additional observation. So let's go ahead with the motions, but I'm looking to put a third motion on the table.
I will, I will second your third motion.
All right. Let me see what the third motion.
Can we, what is the motion? What happens when there's a substitute to the substitute motion, Mr. Parliamentary?
I think we vote on the, the first substitute motion, and then you can have another substitute motion if that one fails.
Yeah, let's do that. All right.
So I, may I ask a clarifying question, please?
Great.
So I just, so even what the substitute motion was, is that the money is held until the city council makes a?
No, the substitute motion right now is staff's recommendation. That was put forward by Councilmember Silverstein and seconded by the mayor, I believe. And that is the substitute motion. We're going to vote on whether to substitute that for the motion that you made, and then another substitute motion can be made or a friendly amendment. If the motion fails, to substitute.
Can I ask a question? City Manager McClary, is, if you were going to recruit a community development director, you would need a job description, correct?
Absolutely, correct.
And I don't know how long it's going to take to do that, but would we have a chance to review that, that position description before it goes out to the, to the working public?
I'm so glad that you asked, that asked that question, Councilmember Grisante. The staff needs to bring that job description and have the council approve it before we could add it into our list and recruit for it.
I think Joe told us that was going to happen. That was, that's how the process was going to work. We heard that once. Look, we're not launching space rockets here, guys. All right? And, and let me give you, you know, and I think I will echo what I've heard over here. This ain't working. So go talk to residents. All right? With, you know, my wife comes home every time she goes to the hairdresser or whatever and says, you know, people are bitching about the fact that they can't get anything done. At least my experience has been, look, it is the manager's job to recruit and retain people. That's what they're supposed to do. All right? We're not doing that. Now, you know, and I do think this extra position will help us accomplish that. So I'm in favor of it. And we're going to get the, we'll, we'll get the details on, you know, up and down the road. But look, we, if we don't start doing the same thing over and over again, expecting different results, somebody's defined that already. And, you know, the answer is insanity because it, it doesn't happen. You guys, you got to try something different to make it, to make some change.
This isn't something different.
It is something different.
No, the city has already had a combined department.
Mary Ann, this is something different. Right now, this, we don't have it. This is different than what we have today.
Explain to me how this is different than when the city previously had the departments combined. How is this different?
You're asking, that's not the question.
That is my question. How is this different?
Well, yes, your question, but that's, it doesn't apply with what we're dealing with. We got a problem we have to fix now.
You said that doing the same thing over You said that doing the same thing over and over again, you guys are recommending going back to something that the city decided to change.
I think, what are our motions on the table? We're going to be doing this all night long.
If I could, again, back to the clarification. If we are not authorizing the community development director class specifications, then why is it listed in our items? If that's something that we're going to have come back to us at a future time? That's what's confusing to me right now. If that isn't being requested at this time, why is it included?
I think it's pretty obvious from everything we've just heard. This is a, this is a budget decision tonight.
Right.
And I think it's ironic that out of the 60, 80, 90 million dollar budget, whatever it is, that this is the tail wagging the dog that we're spending all this time discussing.
No, this is a major change to our city.
Let me finish, please. The city manager just explained that before the money can actually be spent, before this position can actually occur, the city manager or the city staff has to present to the city council a job description that will be approved. So this is clearly simply a budgetary decision to set aside funds that may need to be spent during the course of the year so that they're accounted for and that we don't have to amend the budget later if it's decided to go forward. And if we decide not to go forward, the money just sits in the bank, but we, this should have just been approved without even thinking about it. So I'm going to encourage Doug to not proceed with this alternative substitute because I think all he's asking for by way of the other substitute is to do exactly what the protocol already is if we approve the staff recommendation. But that's the answer. We can, we can discuss at some future date why we are or aren't, why the city manager is or isn't creating this position. Again, though, I'm going to, I'm going to emphasize to the public, I think it's pretty obvious why this budget decision is being hijacked by this objection to the staff being altered in some meaningful way perhaps by the city manager. And it's in order to keep the dysfunction as opposed to solving it.
Okay, we have a, you want to change your motion?
No, I think, let's be very clear about exactly what we're doing here. It's not that I'm disagreeing with anybody's position, but let's document it properly. And I will say one other thing. You know, Mary Ann brings up a point of what was the reason 13 or 14 years ago to make a change. That's fine. But right now, I think when I look at the Baker Tilly report, which I read all 98 pages or whatever it was, what you really, what I really walked away with is there's a lack of enough management time to be able to lead, direct, and control the success of these departments. It's not that people aren't trying, it's not that they aren't skilled, it's not that they're not dedicated to the city. But as Mary Ann points out, we're unique. We've got everything from coastal commission to our own issues with MRCA and so forth. I mean, just like tonight's conversations, everything, every time I turned around, it was a planning issue, it seemed like. So the, the leadership, enough time and enough skill hours to be able to deliver the kind of leadership that they need to fill the eight positions or keep, keep everything grinding through, that's what's missing here. So I hear Mary Ann's question. Let's go through, I'd recommend, let's go through the vote as we have a substitute motion on the table. And let me see if I can't do a friendly amendment to Mary Ann's that kind of codifies where I think we want to end up with this, which is probably what we're already saying we're going to do, but let's make sure everybody knows what the, the three-step shuffle is to get to where we make a decision that's proper for the city. But I think it's going to probably be the Baker Tilly outcome, but let's make sure we've done it the right way and thoughtfully. That's, that's where I'm going with this.
And what do you, what do you suggest that we do that we're not planning on doing right now?
You're talking about the vote or the...
The, the, the item you're talking about. What are, there, my understanding was, we're going to define what we're going to do, we're going to bring it back to the council, we'll take a look at all that, but that whole process, while that's going on, we are moving forward with the process of actively saying, this is a change we think we need to make to improve the process. And I think that's what we have to do. And that's my take.
All right. I think in deference to Mary Ann's and Paul's comments, let's make that a condition of the approval of the budget, but it's nothing more than what was probably going to happen, but it just formalizes the fact that the city council needs to check the boxes for the job description, and I'll call it the business plan for the lack of something better of what the, what the department will be. It's not war and peace, it's really just making sure everybody knows where their checklist is to get this in place. I mean, I've seen the manage, the organization chart, which is part of the package here, I think it's page 15 and 16. It looks like it makes sense to me from a management point of view, but let's, let's get it approved by the council. If there's concerns about it, let's make sure we're all in consensus on it, so.
How many meetings you wanted to do the same thing? You know, we've been doing it now for what, an hour?
Doesn't seem, doesn't seem to bother us on other issues. Let's do this. Let's, let's just make sure that we've got the boxes checked where we feel like we're making the proper decision. I don't disagree that this is informally what's going to come to us, just make it a formal part of the process. It's easily done. But right now, we've got to get through the substitute motions. I'd ask that we call the questions.
I will withdraw the substitute motion and wait to hear the, this precise articulation of what Doug's trying to do because I'm not, I'm not understanding it. But it's clear he's not going to vote for the substitute, so we might as well not waste time voting on it. Let's hear what the other substitute is.
All right. Here's my, here's my friendly amendment. We approve the budget, the three resolutions that are before us with the stipulation that the city manager and staff brings back to the council, A, a business plan for the operation of the new department, and secondly, the job description and all the other things that go with the job description, salary grade and so forth, for approval by the council before it goes out for a formal job request.
So is, is that, would be staff's recommendation, but the, except that approval of the budget and the position of community services director is continued until this plan is presented to the council for the reorganization of the department?
Presented and approved by the council. That would be my motion, my substitute, my friendly amendment.
Yeah, we're blowing all of the place. One minute we're saying it's the city manager's responsibility to, to run the staff, all right, and make the decision. The next thing we're saying, well, maybe it isn't, maybe we got to make sure he does it right, even though they said they're going to do it right, we don't trust him. You know, look, you're going to vote on what you want to vote for, but guys, like I said, we're not launching space rockets. This is a, you know, I've had this conversation with, how many, how long ago did I start a conversation with you saying we need a third, a person in there? Way before Baker Tilly. This is, this is not brain surgery, all right? I'm sorry.
I, I hear your comment, but I think what we're trying to do is to build a consensus, and that's all we're doing. It's not going to slow down the process, and it's not any discouragement of the city manager's position, it's just making sure that in our role of oversight, that we agree with the policy, that we probably likely already feel like we know what it's going to be. But let's, let's go through this step. And I agree with Bruce, this should be almost an automatic process, but the questions have been raised, so let's, let's address it, just like we ask people on consent items, if you got a problem with it, bring it forward, let's have a discussion on it.
All right.
And that's where I think we are here.
So I'm, I'm a, I'm very particular when it comes to what we're doing. And what I'm hearing from Doug, and this isn't a criticism, I'm just trying to get clarity, what I'm, what I'm hearing from Doug sounds like it's not a friendly amendment so much as it's a substitute because the friendly amendment is to approve everything subject to this codicil, so to speak. But Mary Ann's motion, which is on the table, is to not approve item three. It's, it's to, I mean, it's, I'm sorry, it's to, it's to reject that position entirely until we later discuss it. And it's, it's a small difference, but I, but I, I'm hearing it be sufficiently different that this sounds like Doug's proposing a substitute as opposed to an amendment. And I really don't care how we do it, but I just want to make sure we do it right and we know what we're doing.
Yeah, and I'm fine to defer to the parliamentarian, who's the city council, city attorney. You tell us how it needs to be done. I think I know where, I can get three votes for mine, so maybe all five, hopefully.
Either is, is, is a fine approach to this. If you want to, the proposed, I believe, the proposed friendly amendment would be to change the motion to staff's recommendation, except that the approval of the funding for the community services director and the, the authorization for the position salary arrangement specifications not be approved at this time, and that an item be brought back to the council to, to review the proposed reorganization, and at that point in time, the decision on the budgetary allocation and the position salary arrangement specifications of the community services director would be determined at that time. Is that correct?
That's not what I'm hearing.
Did we say we're not going to approve the funding?
I'm, I'm hearing the motion, the friendly amendment by Doug being that we approve the staff's recommendation with the caveat that the money not be spent on the new position until the new position is specifically approved by the city council.
Right.
Well, the, the issue is either the funding is allocated or the funding is not allocated. Is the funding being allocated at this time?
That's what I'm hearing.
Or is it not being allocated at this time?
Funding is allocated and it just can't be, I'm just saying, it isn't finalized, isn't available to be spent until the city council has approved the job description and, lack of a better word, the business plan for the new department.
Trevor, you're cogitating on this.
Can I try this? What I'm hearing, Mary Ann's proposal, as I understand it, is to X out of the approved budget, the funding for this position. Doug's view is to approve the budget in its entirety, but make a caveat, an express statement, that that money is not to be spent unless we later expressly authorize it. That's, that's what I'm hearing is the difference between the two proposals.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm proposing. It's not that we're, it's not that we're killing the position, it's not that we're not funding the position. Money's in the budget, but we want to see the, the plan before it's activated to go public and go search for the added, added stuff.
It's, it's very much like the money for the snack shack. It's in the budget, but the snack shack hasn't yet been approved to spend that specific money. We have to subsequently approve the plan, somebody does.
So is, is it fair to characterize it as that the funding would remain in the budget for this position, but the position itself is, is not created and authorized to be spent unless and until this report is brought back to the council?
However, however you want to write it.
And the class specifications.
Yeah, that's the intention. Let's get it done quickly, and let's make sure that we know, we know what we're approving for this position. But I, I, I think, I think we need to move quickly on this, get it decided one way or the other, and let's have the money in the budget and ready to go as soon as we can see what the plan is. Mary Ann had, had good points. We haven't seen this, it's a major change. It's not hard, it's not hard to have it put together in a matter of a few months. It sounds like that was going to be the plan anyway, so let's, let's just make that a condition of actually spending the money. And I ask the city manager's okay with that?
I'm fine with that, that path.
Okay.
I'll accept.
Trying to, so the, the motion then would be staff's recommendation with the following changes, that the budget allocation for the community services director not be spent unless and until a plan is brought forth for the reorganization of the, of the department and, and the creation of that position and approved by the council, and that the position of community services director under item three not be authorized at this time.
Which is how it works anyway.
Unless and until this report is...
Sorry, Mr. City Attorney, you've been stating community services director, it's community development director.
Community development director, I'm sorry. Community development director. Unless, unless and until that report is brought forward and approved by the city council. Does that reflect the motion?
That would reflect my motion, yes.
And the, that's right, it would reflect the friendly amendment. Does the motion maker and the second also accept that friendly amendment?
Yes. Thank you. If I was the second, it's been a long time.
Yes.
Okay. May I request a roll call vote on this one?
Kelsey, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Riggins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisanti?
Yes.
Councilmember Silverstein?
I approve the whole, I like the budget as it is, and I don't agree with the caveat, so I'm going to vote no.
Mayor Protem Stewart?
Yes.
Mayor Yurey?
I'm voting no.
Motion carries.
And please, city manager, don't bring us back any more new positions.
I'm getting too old for this stuff. Okay. I just have one, one item before you go, Joe. The reserve fund. I mean, you're right, what we did is request, take a look at it, and what I ask is, can we get a date when you're going to be able to bring that back? And the answer I got was, we've got too many priorities for us to sit down and think about a date. Can we get a date of when you can come back? Look, I just read the newspapers, LA Times yesterday, wildfires this year have burned 90,000 acres. This, so far this year was only 5,000 acres last year. I mean, this is, this is not getting any better. And I just want to make sure that if something happens, we have the answer in place to be able to solve it. So what are my chances of getting a date?
Mayor, to correct that statement, I didn't tell you that we didn't have a date because we have too many things on our project or however you said that. I said we hadn't chosen a date yet, and that was the response to your question at the time.
No, I guess...
Because we haven't considered it yet because the direction from council was to give it some thought and return at a later date, so we haven't put a date on our long-range calendar yet. So I do not have a date to provide you.
How long do you think, how long do you think it'll take us to get me a date?
I don't know, I'd say we could probably return in 90 days if you want a rough, a rough swag of time. I'm not going to give you a specific date.
Mayor, may I ask a question?
Sure.
You're, I think I'm a little unclear as to what you're asking for. The city already has a policy to have a 50% reserve of our general funds. Are you looking to change that or...
I'm saying, when that policy was put in place, we didn't have global warming, we didn't have sea rise levels. I don't know what the impact of all those things is going to be. Like I said, the article in the paper said we've gone through 90,000 acres burned this year versus 5,000 last year. So the situations that we're looking at today are different than when that 50% reserve was put in place. Maybe it's adequate, maybe it's not, but I think it's something we should take a look at because our job here is to make sure we're protecting the city. That's all I want to do.
So you're directing staff to bring us back a possible recommendation for revision of policy number three?
Yeah, right now, I'm asking the staff to give me a date when we'll get that recommendation back.
Okay, and having gone through the largest wildfire in the city's, in the county's history and a global pandemic, and we are doing mine financially, you still have concerns?
Yeah.
Okay.
Let me, if I could.
Sure.
I, I think I'm the one that actually started this train. And what I was really after, go back to my original question, is how much surplus cash do we have? Because that's really what the question is. We're asking people to give us input on what the city parks would look like or the vacant land use and so forth. Okay, what are we going to fund it with? Right now, we've got 115% or more of our general fund, and is that just enough? Is it too much? If you take the 65% number, we've probably got $25 to $30 million surplus. So are we, we need to make a decision, is this a surplus that we now have available to, to go build a new park? That's the question I'm asking.
That's exactly the question.
That's the question. It's not about, you know, is number, resolution number three or policy number three correct? It was correct for then, and we have done a, have been fortunate enough to have a wonderful position with a lot of surplus. Question is, how much surplus is enough? And that's what we're asking the city staff to help us with. That's the question I had.
On the surplus question, something that's troubled me, the, all the vacant land that we own, I know that we used, we used bonds to buy it, is that, is that how it was? So is it mortgaged or is it just subject to the city has debt?
Certificates of participation.
But is the land mortgaged or could the land be borrowed on even though we have debt through a bond?
What I read in our report, and I'm sure Assistant Manager Tony can expand on this, but is that the certificates of participation do not encumber the land. It said that there are no mortgages or anything with regards to the land.
That's, that's what I thought. Is that correct? We, we, the land can be mortgaged in the future if we, if we... if we needed to, and we'd still have debt on the bond as well? Or certificates, whatever they're called. Is that accurate?
Yeah, I don't, Mayor and members of the City Council, I actually don't want to make an assumption tonight and give you the wrong information. I think that would be a little more nuanced that we would have to look into and report back on. But the certificates of participation are, in essence, bonds, that you would have investors backing those. So if you were to change the terms of those COPs, that could be problematic.
But I'm going to talk about, so they're general obligations of the city, but they're not secured by the land. I'd like to get clarification on that, because if that's the case, our reserve, in essence, already includes the value of all of these pieces of land that we own, which could be disposed of even at fire sale prices for substantial amounts of money that would dwarf our actual reserve.
Let me just make a quick comment on this. I think when you look at the Legacy Park Fund, because we have obligations that are supposed to be paid back by the income from that land, that looks more like a mortgage. But to answer Council Silverstein's question, perhaps with a bit of investment banking background, it isn't so much that the land can be mortgaged. It's really a case of can the city fund the debt coverage? I think all city debt is basically a general obligation, unless you have a specific income stream, like an industrial revenue bond, or in the case of Legacy Park, where we have income property to cover it. Otherwise, it's just how much debt service can you cover?
Right. But we could sell. I mean, I'm not advocating we do this, but in an extreme emergency, the city can sell property it owns. Legacy Park might be a different issue because of the water system, but like the Chili Cook-Off Lot, the Tranquas property. If the city owns them outright, and they're subject to bonds which are general obligations but not mortgages that are secured by the property, we can sell that property if we needed cash, if we really needed it.
You're absolutely correct, but I think what you're going to find is some of those properties have deed restrictions that would carry on to subsequent owners.
Let me see if I can wrap this up. City manager, can you, I think you're hearing that there is some concern, or at least some interest in making sure we're covered. If you could sit down, maybe take a look and get us a date when we, I don't need the answer right now, but at least a date when we're going to come back with that. I would appreciate that. Is that a possibility?
Understood. Yes. I will. Yes.
Let's do that.
You got it.
Anybody else?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Paul.
I just want to say I have all the confidence in the world that we are not in any financial difficulty. I think that you could look at every city in the state of California, and I can't think of more than about two that might be in a better financial situation than we are. So I'm going to suggest that we adjourn for a 10-minute recess, and then come back and finish this agenda.
I agree. Let me just make one last comment. You have consistently said, as part of your Safe Coast California, that the city could be liable for billions if the water level rises. I mean, you've got to be consistent.
You're going to be so happy to hear this, Steve.
You've got to be consistent, Paul. You've got to be consistent.
You're going to be so happy to hear this, Steve. There's a conference going on on the 26th about sea level rise, and the new guidance that has been dropped, best science guidance that's been adopted by the state of California, and the situation is not merely as dire as it was thought to be four years ago.
See, things get better if you wait. All right. Let's take a break. How about 9:55? Come back.
14 minutes.
How about 10:00?
10:00.
That's 9:00. Okay. Everybody back? Where's Trevor? Trevor? Oh, man. All right. We're back in session. Everybody's here. Let's go on to Item 3 or 4C. And Trevor, what are we supposed to do in 4C now? So we can get out of here before midnight.
The request from Scott McCullough was that the LCP amendment be approved, and that the Zone Text Amendment changes the municipal code, both Chapter 12 and Chapter 17, and the corresponding resolutions, that those items be continued to a date uncertain. And that was the recommendation. And then if that was approved, then staff would meet with them and discuss in greater detail the proposed changes to the municipal code and those resolutions.
Trevor, are we allowed to vote on that bifurcation before there's a staff presentation and a public hearing?
No, because that would be basically making the motion. The agenda is this way, but I think staff is going to present an abbreviated version of the Zone Text Amendments so that we can, if the council does want a more fulsome discussion of those Zone Text Amendments and Resolutions, staff is prepared, but they're not going to get into depth on that unless...
Abbreviate it, Richard. Lay it on us.
Understand, Mayor. And just to let you know, we have Gail Karsh, our city's wireless attorney, available by Zoom, and also Tyler Eaton, our senior planner, is available by Zoom as well. What you have before you this evening is three parts, as mentioned earlier. The major part today is the Local Coastal Program Amendment. And the reason why that is a pressing issue is that that was adopted by the California Coastal Commission on February 7th of this year, and we have six months to take action on it. If we fail to take action, then essentially it deems it as the city did not accept the changes, and we would have to start over again. What I have before you on this particular slide is just kind of a quick overview for you of the changes to the Local Coastal Program Amendment. You do have a redlined version in your agenda packet, but as you can see, we updated the definitions contained in the Local Coastal Program regarding wireless facilities. There was also some changes in the language in Chapter 3 to address wireless permits in the permit requirements for wireless permits that are in the public right-of-way, as well as those that are non-right-of-way. This is similar to our ordinances that we have currently in the books. We have a non-right-of-way ordinance and a right-of-way ordinance. We also modified, excuse me, the Coastal Commission provided some changes to the language, the general standards for review. And then we also added in the design standards that were approved by the City Council in 2020 and 2021. There was a request to modify the waiver language, and that once again came from the comments from the California Coastal Commission. The California Coastal Commission also took issue with our public notice requirements. However, those noticing requirements will continue to exist in the MMC. And because of the way we do business in the Planning Department, we have to comply with all codes. So even though the noticing requirements are not in the LIP, they are still going to be required to take place because they are in our municipal code. The Coastal Commission also removed the requirement that we proposed for findings, but once again, these findings will remain in effect because they are in the MMC ordinance. And as I mentioned above, we've got to be consistent with both documents. There are some minor modifications and relocation of utility poles when needed for wireless facilities and temporary wireless facilities to qualify as de minimis waiver. And also, the Coastal Commission, in Chapter 13, we removed the exemption for a temporary wireless facility on wheels, often referred to as a COW, from the Temporary Event Section of the LIP. And then just quickly, as it seems that there appears to be an appetite to move this to a later date, staff had also, as part of this, there were also some changes to both the right-of-way ordinance and non-right-of-way ordinance for the purpose of clarification to match with the Local Coastal Program Amendment, as well as some of the cleanup language that was requested by Malibu for safe tech. Chapter 17 is the non-right-of-way ordinance, and it's Chapter 12 that is the right-of-way ordinance. And so what you have here in the black, in the first row there, is there were some changes in Chapter 17. There was some proposal for additional definitions for consistency with the LCPA. There was also an amended general standards for wireless facilities consistent with the Local Coastal Program Amendment. And then also, we were going to, we proposed the amendment of the waiver language for purposes of consistency with the LCPA. And then also, there was going to be a change in location standards, and the text you have here in red, that was what was proposed. In the public right-of-way ordinance, Chapter 12, there was a proposal, once again, just like I was mentioning before, there was going to be some changes to definitions. Once again, these are consistency-type requirements. We were also going to look at creating Type 1 and Type 2 permits. And the purpose here is that in the non-right-of-way ordinance, you have two types of applications for wireless facilities. And also, we were going to codify that the approval authority for these in the right-of-way were going to be Type 1, were going to be through the Planning Director, and Type 2 through the Planning Commission. And of course, the Director's decision on these Type 1s would be appealable to the Planning Commission. And then there was waiver language, once again, consistencies. And also, we proposed to modify some of the specific language as part of the resolution you have in front of you, to talk about some standards in relation to power poles. to talk about some standards in relation to power poles. So we have a variety of recommendations tonight that are in your agenda report. Staff has worked with Malibu for Safe Tech. They have expressed to us that they would like some of the language that's in the Malibu Municipal Code to remain. And they would like us not, if I understood them correctly, not to just make everything mesh together and be consistent with the Local Coastal Program. I'm sure that Scott McCullough, their attorney, is online. I'm sure he could speak to this if you have questions. But they do feel that some of the language we have, and I hope I'm paraphrasing this correctly, in the municipal code is stronger than the language that the Coastal Commission put in the amendment when they certified it. And so that is one of the reasons why they would like us to have the changes to Chapter 17 and 12 delayed to a later date. There's others, some other cleanup items that they're proposing, and this would give staff time to work with them, to understand their concerns, and be able to present those to this body. Should the Planning Commission, or excuse me, City Council this evening take an action to just approve the Local Coastal Program Amendment, I am prepared to let you know what changes are needed for Ordinance 519. And at a high level, what we would end up doing is removing all the references to the Malibu Municipal Code from the title of Ordinance 519. We would also need to eliminate Section 3 and then relabel all of the remaining sections. And the reason for that is that Section 3 relates to the proposed Zone Text Amendments. And then also, we would want to remove Exhibit A from that ordinance, as that exhibit contains the Zone Text Amendments, and Exhibit B, which is the changes to the Local Coastal Program, would then be relabeled as Exhibit A. I know I went kind of fast on all of that. Please ask me any questions if you have them. And as I mentioned, I've got our wireless attorney, as well as our senior planner Eaton, available for any questions.
The recommendation that you just made for the LCP, the Malibu for Safe Tech, they agree with that, right? That's their, that's what they would like to see us do.
That is correct. We met with them, and that was what they requested and put in their correspondence.
Okay, anybody else?
Just a quick question. So I know where the demarcation is between the Local Coastal Plan and the Malibu Municipal Code. There were a couple items that you put on the screen that had red highlight to it. I think one of them was the city expressly designates residential zones as disallowed. And then there was the 36-inch spacing on power poles. That's municipal code, correct?
Yes, it is, Councilmember Stewart.
Okay, so in what we're being asked to do, those items are now set aside, and it's only the Local Coastal Plan and the modifications that you requested on that list. Is there a list of those, is there, is what we're being asked to approve in the package that you've given to us tonight, or do we have to build on ourselves?
Those items are Exhibit, Exhibit B of Ordinance 519.
Exhibit B is what you want, is what you want to change, right?
Exhibit B, correct. Exhibit B of Ordinance 519 is what Malibu for Safe Tech is requesting that we adopt. Exhibit B is, unfortunately, mine's black and white, but is the red line, I hope yours is a copy, is the red line to all the changes that are in the Local Coastal Program Amendment.
Exhibit B would be adopted as part of the ordinance, not Exhibit A. Correct?
Yes, you are correct.
So, okay.
I'm sorry, what page is--
Forty-two is Exhibit B.
Thank you.
Thirty-two is Exhibit A.
What other changes do we need to do?
So that, so the ordinance, the other, the other ordinance and resolutions are not going to be, are proposed not to be adopted. It would just be adopting Ordinance Number 519. There'll be a change to the title, which I will read. It's going to eliminate the amendments to the Zone Text Amendment. And then--
Going to take out Exhibit A on, which starts on page thirty-two.
Exhibit A will be eliminated. Section 3 will be eliminated.
I don't, where's--
I'm sorry, are we in Ordinance 518 and 519?
No, 519.
518 will not, is not proposed to be introduced. It would be just 519. And Section 3 of 519 is proposed to be eliminated. Section 4 would be renumbered to Section 3, Section 5 to Section 4, and so on and so forth. And Richard, are there other changes?
No, sir. You read them correctly.
And then Exhibit B would then become Exhibit A. We have to change the--
So moved.
Mayor, before the council makes any motions, we do have public comment on this item.
Okay.
We do have a speaker slip, I believe, from Howard Rzuski.
Howard's gone. There he is, there he is.
Wireless.
Okay.
Then we do have raised hands.
Who's raised their hand?
There's two hands. First is from Scott McCullough.
Who's the second hand?
Ryan.
Okay, Scott, go ahead. If you're happy with what we're doing, just tell us that.
We are happy with what you're doing. I just wanted to weigh in and reaffirm that we do appreciate you going forward with the LCPA only. And if I was following what Trevor and Richard were laying out in terms of the amendment to the ordinance that you could adopt tonight, or the changes to it, it would be before you for approval tonight, I think that works. And so I can leave you with that, give you back the rest of the time. Thank you for working with us on this.
Thank you, Scott. Ryan, go ahead.
Ryan, you're unmuted.
Yeah, I don't know where Ryan is, so let's bring it back to the council table. Any comments from up here? Anybody? Mary Ann?
On Section 1B, that doesn't seem to be completely accurate with the history of events.
What page are you on?
Twenty-five. Ordinance 519, the first page. I agree, yes, we are very high-fire severity zone. We have been devastated by major fires, but due to power pole failures, I don't think that completely encompasses the actual events that occurred.
Woolsey was a-- I think Woolsey was a power pole failure.
I thought it was a substation.
But I don't think 207 was.
207 was a power pole, but I don't believe it was the wireless facility. It was the, just downing of the electrical lines.
Well, we actually had two fires in 207.
You're right.
Well, the Canyon Fire, the 207, we actually had three fires in 207, to be accurate.
So what, what do you--
I, I mean, can we actually get an accurate cause of the fires written in there? Or is everybody okay with this partially accurate?
Which part is inaccurate? If you want to make a change to it, you may.
That the Woolsey Fire, wireless communication failures contributed to the overburden of the power pole.
That's for the 2007 fire, that's--
It is essential that wireless communication facilities are engineered to prevent fire and withstand fire events as much as possible, at least in the manner comparable. It just, it just talks that it was the wireless facilities that caused the fires, which it was the power poles that caused the fires that they happen to be possibly co-located on.
Yeah, I think they only mentioned a wireless there is, in terms of cause, was that the, it says in this case, a 2007 fire, wireless communications contributed to the overburden of the power pole. That's all it's saying.
Yeah.
Okay, well, okay. All right.
Anything else?
Yeah, I just, clarifying question. When it says, could you bring back up the red line with the residential districts, please? Okay. So does that mean that you can still have wireless facilities in the public right-of-way in residential districts, or you can't have any wireless facilities in a residential zone, regardless of where, whether it's located in the right-of-way or a private property?
So to understand your question completely, so you're talking about the language here, the city expressly designates residential zones as disallowed locations? An application other than an eligible facilities request seeking to place a wireless facility in a residential zone must demonstrate the need through clear and convincing evidence that there is no technically feasible alternative. That, that's what you're referring to, correctly?
I'm just trying, so if it's, if you have the right-of-way in a residential zone, can the company still propose to put in a wireless facility on a right-of-way area?
Senior Planner Eaton, could you please answer that one? I want to make sure I don't misspeak on this.
Yes, can you guys hear me okay?
Got you. Go ahead.
Okay, yeah, Tom's going to work it. So that specific language is only for the non-right-of-way. So it pertains to private zones.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Anybody else? Need a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept staff recommendation. As modified.
And that would be to adopt Ordinance Number 519. In ordinance of the City of Malibu, determine the proposed code amendments are exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act approving the California Coastal Commission suggested modifications to Local Coastal Program Amendment, LCPA Number 16-007, specifically Local Implementation Plan Sections 2.2 and 3.16, Chapter 13, and Appendix 1, Table B, permitted uses, Local Coastal Program Amendment Number 16-007, an amendment of the, to the Local Coastal Program to modify regulations, procedures, and application requirements for the installation of wireless communication facilities. And this ordinance would then be modified to delete Section 3, renumber the remaining sections consecutively. So the current Section 4 becomes Section 3, and the reference in this section to Local Coastal Program Amendment and Findings will then reference Exhibit A rather than Exhibit B, because the current Exhibit A will be deleted, and the current Exhibit Number B will be renumbered to become Exhibit A. Does that accurately reflect the motion?
That I heard.
Thank you, sir.
I'll second it.
I got a motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'd have it. All right, item 6A. Susan, you're on.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So this evening, what we have for you here is a resolution to establish criteria for declaring a local emergency during periods of high-fire risk. As you know, California Government Code Section 8630 empowers the City Council to declare a local emergency when there are conditions of extreme peril. And in addition to being able to declare, you, the code also dictates that you need to terminate the local emergency at the earliest possible date the conditions warrant. So in 2021 and 2022, we, we, the City Council declared a local emergency when we had a very low fuel moisture, and we had been experiencing a number of fires that were caused by illegal camping in the hillsides. And then that proclamation then enabled us to implement a program to seek out and remove illegal campers in the hillside a little more quickly than we normally do. And so after we had done this a couple of years, it was recommended by our city clerk that we probably just establish a policy so that we can be consistent from year to year in terms of what conditions need to be present when we declare, and what conditions should be present when we terminate. So it's just standard from year to year. And we would have brought this to you last year, but we never hit the critical live-fuel moisture, which was, you know, really great. I mean, in November, we were still above 100% fuel moisture. And as you know, 60% or less is considered critical. But we wanted to bring this to you now before we get closer to when the live-fuel moistures are dipping, because we want to have this policy in place. So considering a number of factors that contribute to extreme fire danger, such as the fact that we're in a very high-fire hazard zone, live-fuel moisture, sand and winds, red flag conditions, and just the timing historically of when we've had large fires, and working very closely with the Los Angeles County Fire Department Chief Joe Smith, who is an expert on fire behavior, we developed some recommended criteria that are here for you today to be part of this policy. So the criteria that we're recommending for declaring the emergency is when the live-fuel moisture is at 65% or less. And even though, you know, 60% is considered critical, we think, we believe that 65, if it's at 65%, we're on, we're on our way down. We don't have to wait for it to 60. We want to be able to start putting protective actions in place as soon as possible. Then the criteria for terminating, terminating the local emergency is based on a lot of how the fire department, when they consider fire season over, which includes that the city has received a minimum of two inches of recorded rainfall, that the live-fuel moisture is above 80%, there have been no fire weather watch or red flag warnings in the previous two weeks. And, and this part, we kind of added in, and when there's no fire weather watch or red flag warning in the extended forecast as determined by National Weather Service. So on February 7th, the Public Safety Commission considered this, these criteria, and they approved of the proposed criteria and is recommending it to you this evening with one caveat. One item that they wanted you to consider is to possibly, instead of using the, the weather, the weather forecast, that's the seven-day forecast, one that goes out a little bit further, because the extended forecast is seven days, but there's also a forecast that goes out from eight to 14 days. But the one thing I would point out is with that particular forecast, the, it's a probability forecast, and it's not as reliable, whereas the seven-day forecast is much more reliable and generally more what the fire department depends on when looking at possible red flag conditions. So the recommendation tonight from staff is that we stick to the original recommendation that we developed with the fire department, that we use the National Weather Service seven-day forecast as part of the criteria for terminating a local emergency. And that concludes my staff report. And if you have any questions, I'm here.
Thank you, Susan. Questions, comments?
I have a question for Susan. The, the criteria, as I read this, is, no matter what the criteria are, we still have to proclaim it and vote for it. Is that correct? Or is it something, are we setting up a, something that becomes an automatic thing that can be handled by your, your department or the city manager?
So we still have to proclaim. So what would happen is we'd be monitoring, like we always do, the live-fuel moisture. And once we get to that sort of the trigger point, we would prepare a declaration to bring to the council to approve. Now, if conditions are such that we feel like we need to get this done more quickly, then we can have the city manager proclaim and have it ratified by the council. So we can, you know, based on the conditions, if it seems really urgent based on everything that's happening, we would just have city manager declare. And I also just want to say that we are doing this all the time as it is. And I also just want to say that we are doing this all the time as it is. We have staff constantly out there looking for encampments in the hillside. So it's not like we're not actively doing this all the time. And same was with the termination. Just because if we terminated, that doesn't mean that we stop actively, you know, doing that. The local emergency is any local emergency. What does, it just gives you a little bit extra, for lack of a better term, sort of police powers to move more quickly for... Because usually, the standard protocol for removing illegal campers is to work with them, give them a little time. You know, the Sheriff's Department, they have a 30-day protocol. But if it's an emergency, we can move more quickly on that. So that's kind of the difference. But I just want to assure you that we're always working on this all the time. But during these peak fire, you know, threat times, we want to be able to move more quickly.
Thank you. And I endorse the fact that the city manager or perhaps even some other official could declare this if there's a time crunch. It's time.
Excuse me? We're doing questions right now, not comments, right?
Quick question. On the, where we're allowed to remove people from the fire area. I thought at one time, this was only for land that was public land. Does it work for private property too, or just public land?
Yep. Private property is treated differently because that's where, you know, we need to have a letter of agency for the Sheriff's Department into the property. The property owner has to actually want to say that the individual is trespassing. If they're okay with them being on their property, there's not much we can do unless there's, we can establish there's a nuisance. That, which is why, you know, we updated our nuisance code so that if we can see that the person who's living, you know, unhoused and is cooking and, you know, or has fuel, things like that, we can go after it from that angle. So it's just a different approach to it when it's private property.
Okay, so that fairly, that makes it fairly limited as to what we can do here in Malibu because most of the property is owned either by private property owners. And it is parkland, like MRCA and the state parks, they've got their own criteria, right?
Correct.
Okay.
But we work with them regularly, and they're usually very cooperative when it comes to this.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else before we go to public comment?
On the letter of agencies, do those have to be renewed?
Yes, every year.
Any speakers down there? Nothing?
No, we do not have any public comment cards.
All right, you probably must have got it better early.
Wait, actually, there's one hand. Oh, never mind.
All right, we're closing public comment, back to the council table. Bruce?
Yeah, I want to propose an amendment to this proposal. I'd like to add to the first sentence of Section 2, where it says, "City Council does hereby adopt the following criteria." I'd like to add the word "minimum" before the word "criteria." And the same change in the sentence that follows the first subsection A. And then I'd like to add a paragraph before Section 3 that says, "In addition to the foregoing, the City Council reserves the right to declare a local emergency notwithstanding the absence of the criteria identified herein, and to decline to terminate a local emergency notwithstanding the existence of the criteria set forth herein." Because I don't want this to be something that handcuffs us to only be allowed to declare a local emergency if that paragraph is satisfied and only allowed to, and we are required to terminate it if the other criteria is satisfied. There may be new things that happen that we're not thinking of right now, and we need to be able to reserve the ability to declare an emergency in those circumstances. So my proposal is that we adopt this with that, with those changes.
Susan, you got a problem with that?
No, I mean, I think that would happen anyways. I, you know, this is just, we're trying to set some criteria so we can be consistent from year to year. But even within all this, I think we're always going to be using, you know, sound judgment. You know, even say with the 65% for declaring, if we can see in the forecast that live-fuel moisture is nosedive, I mean, we're not, probably not going to wait till it's 65%.
That's why I'm making this suggestion.
I think Bruce just gives us more flexibility. That's, right?
Yes.
Yeah, we wouldn't be constrained, but there's no harm in adding that language, and it could be beneficial if someone tries to assert it in court and maybe help get it dismissed quicker.
No.
Okay, any other comments? Can I get a motion to approve the resolution with that recommendation?
Well, I made that motion already.
I, oh, yeah, sorry.
Then I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'd have it. Thank you very much.
Aye.
We're adjourned.